Apparently it's, hello, hello. Okay, can you hear me now? It's after, it's 7:10. I'll call the town meeting to order. And the first meeting I'll call to order is the special town meeting, which is only two items in it. What I would like to do is save introductions until the main town meeting, but have the pledge of allegiance at this town meeting. So, okay, I'm not being heard in the back. Is there a way, can you hear me now? Okay. Okay, just please wave when you can't hear me. It's the only way I know. I'm not sure how far I can let this stray. I think I'll have to pull it each time. Okay, that's pretty close. Okay, let's have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And Mr. Bulgares, selectman Bulgares, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bulgares. The, will the constable, Mr. Cunningham, read the, the return on the warrant?
Pursuant to tonight's town meeting, I have notified the residents of such meeting.
Okay, that makes us legal. The, as I say, I'm skipping the introductions till afterwards. I'll skip the outline of the rules and regulations, just try to knock these two articles off, and then adjourn the special town meeting. The first article, Article One, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of the following prior year bill said some to be taken from free cash. It's $1,581 to the Northeast Mosquito Control, obviously for Greenhead Control. Will someone move that article? It's moved, seconded, and who will, does anyone wish to speak on it? Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. And I'm checking to see, yeah, I think we have to have a nine tenths vote on this. The way I will do that is by asking anyone opposed to please rise. No one has risen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The second article, Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $156,694 or any other sum from free cash to the snow and ice account to cover the existing deficit balance in this account.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Case?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $156,694 from free cash to the snow and ice removal account.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Mr. Moderator, second.
Seconded. Is there anyone who is opposed to this article? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. That concludes the business of the special town meeting, so I'll accept a meeting to, a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the special town meeting.
It's been moved to adjourn the special, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The special town meeting is ended, and we will proceed to the main town meeting. First, I'll declare, and probably I should have before, the quorum requirement is met. The quorum requirement under the bylaws of the town of Newbury is 40 registered voters. And there are obviously far more than that here, and I'm very grateful for that. Could we have the return of service, Mr. Constable?
Pursuant to this town meeting, I have notified the voters of said meeting.
So now we're legal. I would like to begin by introducing very, some very significant town officials. I think most of you know them, but it gives me a chance to recognize them for the very, very hard work they put in very constantly. So I would ask the members of the Board of Selectmen to rise. Chuck Baer, Mike Bulgares, Damon Jespersen, welcome to the group. David Mountain and Jeff Walker. Glad to have you all, thank you for your enormous service to the town. To the members of the Finance Committee, I'd ask you also to rise when I say your name. Chairman Frank Remley, Linda Allen, Gene Case, Bob Connors, Larry Gay, Erica Jacobson, Marsh Jespersen, and there is your Finance Committee. They do a tremendous amount of work, and I, on behalf of the town, I thank you very much for that. Other significant town officials, I mean, they're all significant, but the Town Clerk, Leslie Haley, Leslie, and the Assistant Town Clerk, Susan Noyes, and the Town Council, Ginny Kramer, Kramer, okay, right behind me, and of course Tracy Blaze, and Angel Wills. And I thank them all for the service they do for the town. The, let me say just a couple of things. I assume that while I know most of you have been to town meetings a lot before, there may be some new people in town who, for whom town meeting is a new experience. And I might just say to them that it's sort of a vestige, but it's the refuge of true democracy in our country, where the voters of the town assemble and make their own decisions about our own bylaws and about our own appropriations for the year, and about the, through the appropriations, the amount that they will be taxed. They're doing it directly. It's a remarkable thing. It exists primarily in New England. I don't think outside of New England. There are many communities that have it, and it's only small communities here. It's a, it's a thing to be treasured. So I welcome you to, okay, I'm, okay, I welcome you to town meeting. Let me explain just a little bit about the rules. The articles that you see are not self-proposing. They, these are subjects, oh, this is, yeah, let me ask you all, check your cellphones and turn them off, okay? It's very, very distracting when the cellphones ring. And let me just check myself. I guess I left mine in the car, so that's fortunate, because usually mine is the one to go off. The, the articles have to have a motion to bring them before the floor. The article says, please consider this proposal. The motion says, with respect to that proposal, I move that we do this, okay? It could be, I move the article. I move exactly what the article says, and that's okay, but it can be something less, as long as it's within the scope of the article. So there has to be a motion to put something before the meeting, and there has to be a second to that motion. After that, we have discussion about it, and people can move to amend the article, and, but usually we vote directly on the article. We'll have to see how it goes tonight. I'm not going to set a fixed time limit on talking. In general, I'm asking the people who introduce the main motion, the main speaker, the person who moved the article, I'm asking him to limit his explanation, if he can, to three minutes. I'll use my own judgment and caution the person if I think he's getting a little bit too ample in his explanation. And people who wish to speak to the motion otherwise, I'll sort of use as a guideline, a minute to possibly two minutes, but I'll use judgment as to whether we're learning something new, and caution the speaker to wind up the remarks. The, we have to authorize guests who may speak at the meeting to, we have to, the town meeting, since the basic rule is nobody can speak except a registered voter of the town, we have to authorize a non-resident of the town to speak, and we have to do that. There are a number of people that I may call on as things develop. I would like to get them all authorized in advance. Ginny Kramer, the Town Council, who has been very, very helpful to me in preparing for my first town meeting as moderator, and Tracy Blaze, and Angel Wills, the Town Accountant, Michelle Franchiforti, the Principal Assessor, Sam Jocelyn, Building Commissioner, Mike Riley, Chief of Police, Chris Farmer, the Superintendent over at Triton, and Bill DeRosa, the Superintendent at the Whittier Regional School. I will ask that you authorize them to speak at the town meeting. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Yeah, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and you're all authorized to speak when the time comes. The, okay, the last thing I'll mention is that if you do want to speak, you just don't get up and start speaking. You have to say, Mr. Moderator, may I speak? If there is, you have to, and the way you do that basically is rising. When you rise, I will ask you, and if you are to speak, give your name and address, okay? So that's the rule. If you want to speak, rise. I will ask you if you're going to speak to come to the microphone and speak that way. So I will try to get through the town meeting as expeditiously as possible while still giving people a chance to speak on the issues. So let us begin with Article One, which is pretty innocuous. It's to accept the reports of the Selectmen, the School Committee, the Regular and Special Committees, and all other officers. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Okay, and, for the whole group? Okay. And the whole group has been moved. Are there any other reports that we should be including, that we should be accepting? For example, I noticed the report of the Capital Planning Committee. Okay. And I'll get a second to the motion, and then I'll have you explain what the Media Committee does. Okay, Mr., do I hear a second? Yep, it's on the floor. Mr. Hendrickson, will you speak? Try to go to the microphone. Do you want to come to this one? It's okay. Try to speak for not more than two minutes about what your committee does.
Hi, Richard Hendrickson, I'm Chairman of the Media Committee. We've been operating for about three years now. We started in 2011. We're an appointed committee. Dave Mountain is our representative on the Selectmen. And we're responsible for the Channel Nine broadcast, for those of you that have cable. For those of you that don't, we have a YouTube site. You can find the YouTube site and the schedule of programming on the town website under the Media Committee. There are links there to both places. We've hired Caleb Noble, who's sitting over there recording this meeting, with some of the equipment that's been bought. Some of that same equipment normally resides in Town Hall, and that's what we use to cover the various meetings that we have volunteers to help us with. So the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board are what we're currently working on. And we're always looking for additional hands. If anyone's interested, we'd be happy to show you what we got over there and how it works, and we'd love to have you help us. Mario Carnavale, one of our committee members, has been handing out a survey tonight. We're interested in feedback about what's been going on, what we've been using for programming for the past year, and any ideas you may have about other things you'd like to see us do. So that's, that's my report. Thanks for listening to me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Are there any others who wish to speak? Hearing none?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Mr. Savin from the Municipal Building Committee would like to give a report.
Right, okay.
So I make a motion for him to make a report?
Yeah, we've, have we already included you in the group? And you, are you a resident of the town? Okay, well, you're, go to the mic and give you two, two, three minutes, okay?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Svan, and I appreciate your time in the committee that I was recently elected to chair. I have about, probably about an hour speech to give you in a report, seriously, but the, and it's, it was lengthy, because these are serious issues that affect all the residents. It's about public safety service concerns that involve the police station. And these are issues that are not new. They've been around for years. The issues are, they're not easy to visible to you, because they're inside the non-public spaces of the police department. And unless you've been bad, you really haven't been back there. So, you know, some kidding aside, I think everyone sees the cruisers. They're well-maintained, they're clean, we have good-looking, well-dressed officers. We see them in our neighborhoods, but what you don't see are the flooding, the sewer backups, rodents, inefficient workspace, holding cells that really just are inappropriate to hold anybody. Those are just a few things. There are, I guess these issues, what I want to say is they're already affecting the safety services to the residents. They're affecting, how are they affecting you? Well, in wasted expenses, there's inefficiencies, there's just basic facilities, walls that need to be repaired, and we're having our police officers do this kind of work, which shouldn't happen. They should be out, they should be focusing on our safety concerns. Secondly, staffing inefficiencies are all costing us taxpayer dollars. Why? Because the facilities are so poor that they can't maintain and keep staff. And that goes twofold to public safety, because the officers know, new issues with the officers themselves, but the best public safety we can have are officers that are invested in our community. Officers that have spent time here, that know the neighborhoods, that know the people, that know us, they can provide a better level of service that have been here. And the turnover is costing us some concerns. Second is political, political liability risks in terms of just the conditions. I don't know if, like I said, anybody's been in the police station, but basically the public area of the police station is four by eight. It's no bigger than a, than a, it's less than the size of that table in terms of square footage. That's the public area. And the same...
I'd say while you're looking for your next remark, are you nearly at the end of your remarks?
No, but, you know, all wrapped up. So what I wanted to do is...
I'd ask you to sort of wind them up. It's a little bit off the subject, which is simply accepting the reports of the various committees.
Well, we're a new committee. We've only met three times, and so we really don't have a report to give to you. What I really have is just an awareness, and that we could use a few more residents that are good at getting out the word and want to get out the issue. This is your issue. It's your safety, it's our safety concerns, you know, everyone needs to be aware about this. So what I wanted to say is I have, there's reports and information on the websites of the town, of the police department, of the, well, the Capital Planning Committee, and these issues aren't new. There's reports on the website from 2004 and 2009. The police chief has stopped writing reports, because it's detrimental to morale to keep publishing the same information over and over again. So check it out. And better yet, if you don't believe me, or you don't think this is important, get a tour of the police station.
Mr. Svan, I think you can go home knowing that you've made the point very forcefully at town meeting, but...
Thank you. But seriously, do please call the police department. They'll give you the five-minute tour, and you'll see for yourself. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Svan. All those in favor of accepting the reports? All those opposed? The reports?
Mr. Moderator, we have one more report?
Right, sure.
Mr. Remley and I would like to present a report for the Finance Committee.
Okay. It's, how long do you think you would be?
We are aiming for five minutes.
Truly.
I will call Frank, he talks for too much.
Yes.
Why do you start? I remember to double-check the...
Okay, this is the Finance Committee. Now, aren't we going to be discussing this with, in the next article, the budget?
No.
Okay. But you're, but you're still addressing yourself to Article One, accepting the report of the Finance Committee? Or to Article? Okay, okay. So keep that part short, because we'll be spending a lot of time on budget.
Yep, we're going to be giving the overview of the budget, not the budget itself.
Yeah, right, right.
We're giving the fundamentals of where the money comes from.
Okay, good. We don't want you to hear this. Go to one of the two mics.
You talk. You talk, and I'm driving.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Just raise your hand if you can't hear me, because, no, you can't hear me? A little better? Okay, I have, hello? I have a soft voice, so, you know, raise your hand. What we're going to do this time, instead of me giving kind of a long-winded overview, I just want to introduce the Finance Committee and kind of give you a brief description of what it is we do, because we're not sure everybody understands what the role of the Finance Committee really is. In the first place, they've all been introduced to you here, but I can say from my vantage point, this is a remarkable group. I mean, we couldn't ask for a better group doing what we do for the town in terms of the diversity of background, of age and cultural diversity and what have you, and experience with the town. There are seven of us right now. Erica, in a second, is going to give you an overview of our financial performance last year, and then looking ahead, which will, which will introduce some of the articles also, or at least give you a little background on some of the articles. First of all, we have Linda Allen. Most of you may know Linda, who is a successful businesswoman in Byfield, running a security All right, I've been instructed to skip that part. Well, you may or may not, but there's a, there's a box up there that, in my perspective, gives you an idea of the talent they bring to this committee, and it's really strong. If I were, I spent my entire career in consulting, management consulting, and business consulting, and public government consulting, and I couldn't ask for a better starting team for this. It brings a very diverse set of backgrounds, and, and they all, they all offer something at, you know, at various times during the year. In any case, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
That's what we did.
It's what we do, exactly. What do we, what do we do? Our role is we meet monthly, and I would say much more than that, because of special issues that come up, budget season, what have you. We, we have roughly 20 to 24 meetings a year of two hours each. We regularly, monthly, review revenues and expenses against projections with Tracy. Tracy gives us her view of them, and I can tell you, those discussions go very well. That's not a big issue. It used to be one of the biggest issues that we had as a Finance Committee, but things are going very smoothly now. We review the impact of significant contracts, like the contract for the transfer station is a good example. Anything that's of any real significance that requires a, particularly a long-term contract. We address reserve funds requests regularly. I don't know if you know it, but the Reserve Fund, which is one line item in the budget, is strictly the Finance Committee domain. We say yes or no on the transfer of revenues from the Reserve Fund for emergency purposes. Right now, that's $90,000. It's been that way for the last three years. Sometimes we spend most or all of it, sometimes only a fraction of it. It depends on what the emergencies are. We work with the Capital Planning Committee, of which Bob Connors has been the chairman, and has done a remarkable job. Our capital plan now is projected out for a rolling average of five years, and it's the first time we've had a real capital plan, in my experience, in Newbury. We work closely with the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen on, on future budgets, and we also have, in the bylaws, we have full access to any financial information with respect to the town, to do our work and to do our jobs. And, okay, so, and we also attend most School Committee and Communications Committee meetings to stay abreast of school budgets, because that's over 50% of what we do. So if you have any, ever have any questions, you're welcome to email me, or contact me through Tracy, whatever, but my email is frankremley@comcast.net. I'll be glad to answer any questions I can for you.
Thank you, Frank. A little shorter than everybody else up here. My name is Erica Jacobson. This is my third year on the Finance Committee. My husband and I moved here and have been homeowners in Newbury for 10 years, which I realize in this crowd makes me a newcomer. But I'm the parent of one child at NES, with another one starting this fall, so I have a very long-term view. So that's what I'm bringing here for us tonight, is to give you a quick presentation, to give you some groundwork for the articles before you this evening. Tonight's presentation is going to cover three key areas. Sorry, just making sure I can talk and see at the same time here. We're going to be looking at fiscal year 2014. This is how we're doing. This is how we, this is the budget year that we're in currently, July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014. We've been through 10 months of the year so far. We also are going to look, we're going to look ahead for the budget before you tonight, which is our fiscal year 2015, starts on July 1. Also, we're going to look ahead to issues and expenses, as you've heard about the police station and other things. We're going to talk briefly, very briefly, about challenges, just at a high level, what challenges we're going to be facing in the upcoming years. Tonight, you, the town residents and voters, are, will be asked to consider a number of financial warrant articles. The Finance Committee has reviewed each of these articles, and has made a recommendation to approve or not approve, and all of that is provided in the booklet you received at check-in tonight. Prior to your consideration of these articles, we'd like to provide a quick, quick overview of our revenue sources, operating budgets, and challenges for next year and beyond. and challenges for next year and beyond. Our first look is 10 months into the year. This is our financial situation as of July, as of April 30. After 10 months of fiscal year 2014, the town is meeting revenue estimates and even performing slightly ahead of projections. We have 93% of projected revenues have been collected as of April 30. This is approximately $15.5 million of $16.7 million overall. As for expenses, diligent oversight by the municipal department heads is keeping expenses in line with our budget. With the exception of snow and ice budget, which we just approved to fund, all of our departments are managing their resources prudently, and even with snow and ice, we all need it. It has to happen. So at this time in the year, we are at 83%, which is right on target for 10 months through the year. However, since the fiscal year does not end until June 30, it is too soon to say we will end the year on such a positive note. And speaking of positive notes, I want to make one thing perfectly clear. The fact that our operating expenses fall in line with our projected revenues is not because we have suddenly found money. We're not rolling in it. In fact, it's quite the opposite. We must have a balanced operating budget each year. What you're seeing tonight will be a balanced operating budget. But our balanced budgets come at the expense of crucial town services. When there was not adequate revenues in fiscal years 2011, 12, and 13, our town services were cut drastically. Department of Public Works, library, council on aging, public safety departments, including the police, saw deep cuts to their budgets. We have deferred maintenance to keep money to fund ongoing services. We have had amazing commitment from our town employees, who are constantly asked to do more with less, and they work diligently to do the right thing. The passage of the Town Administrator Act in 2008 was a significant turning point for the town. New financial controls were instituted, and we have harvested savings, increased efficiencies, but these efforts cannot be maintained forever. We are luckily going into some really good news here, that many of our financial principles have brought us to a place where our capital reserves are currently at an all-time high. For example, the sale of land. Over the last few years, we have worked diligently to remove these items from our rolls. This by, number one, brings us, takes it off our balance sheet as something we have to maintain. It also, proceeds are placed into the land sale fund. And third, when these go into, are sold to private or commercial entities, it becomes subject to local property taxes. So these are working for us. However, since our excess property is virtually depleted, funds in the land sale account should be used judiciously for essential projects only. All of these budget numbers that you see up here, these are our, these are our reserves. These are our operating reserves. We, these are, enable our continuing investment in important maintenance and replacement and renewal projects, as recommended by the capital planning committee. We're going to be looking at approximately $1.2 million in needed capital replacements in FY15. Since, also one thing I always think it's good to note here, is that since these funds and these accounts, including free cash, stabilization, land sale, are from one-time and/or circumstantial revenues, it's not financially prudent or lawful, in the case of the land sale fund, to use these reserves for ongoing expenses. And despite the fact that this is a record level for the town, it is also significantly below the levels recommended by the Commonwealth for emergency, capital, and contingency needs. This money, once spent, is gone. We don't have backups. This is it. Which brings us to our operating budget for this year. This is, the pie chart you see up here is a very, very basic overview of where our money comes from. 80% of our money comes from property taxes. This is limited to our 2.5% increase of annual percent, increase by Prop 2.5 and any new growth. Historically, this presents about 75% to 80% of our town's operating budget. Local receipts is the variety of permits and fees, fines, license, building permits, all of that goes into that, into this area, and that's approximately 8%. State aid, state aid for our town is running at about 4% a year. It's not that much. We don't see much from it, and it's not expected to increase anytime soon. In fact, over the last 10 years, it's been a steady slope of a decline with slight little bumps, where they'll get an extra $30,000 one year or another. We can't rely on this as an ongoing or stable source of funding for our town. The last piece, available funds. This one's always interesting, because it's not a constant. Available funds are the monies that may result from operations. If we realize a savings, we can put it back into, for future budget needs. But this is not a reliable source of revenues. It's not a number that can be projected from year to year. So we need to be sure that we never really rely on this either. Currently, this makes up 8% of our budget, our projected revenues. So that's the money coming in. Where's the money when we get it in? Where does it go? Here we go. This is our operating expenses. The thing to point out about this is that this is very, this is based on the numbers for fiscal year 2015. However, it is very, very similar. You can look at this picture of the pie over the last 10 years. It looks the same. Approximately 56% of our operating budget is going to education. And I want to point out that the operating budget is not what people ask for. This process, this budget that we're presenting tonight has been, the department heads put forth their pieces. We look at it. Tracy works with them, and we look at the revenue side, and then we make them come into line. Where there isn't revenues, that's where the things have to be cut. That's where the budgets cannot be as rich as they need to be and should be. Debt service is going to decrease this year, which is great, and it's going to be 7% of the operating budget. The reasons behind that are much too long, because I can see the moderator here telling me to wrap this up. Benefits and insurance are going up, and municipal departments, which is your general government, public safety, public works, human services, which is your council on aging, veterans affair, board of health, culture and recreation, including the library and historical and town commissions. That's 30% of our budget. That's it. That's all we got for it. So we do with what we can. And on a closing note, here are some of the challenges we face moving ahead. Rising education costs. By no fault of our lovely administrators from Triton, Whittier, and the Essex County Technical, Agricultural and Technical Schools, school costs are continuing to rise. It's, again, driven by lack of state support. It's shifting the burden to new local communities. Local communities are increasingly having to pay for our educations. The other thing that we need to be looking at quite seriously is our addressing infrastructure, roads and buildings. All of them have had deferred, maintenance deferred for many years. They must be addressed if we're going to move forward as a successful town. Also before us tonight is increasing support for the Town of Newberry Municipal Fire Department. One of the articles tonight specifically deals with a capital request. The days of privately nonprofit fire companies being able to do on their own isn't happening. Town support is necessary, and we must look at that as an ongoing operating and capital expenses. And finally, at the bottom of this whole list, is reinstating those deep budget cuts. We have the town we are willing to fund. If we want to see increased services come back, we are going to have to see increases in operations. That's the hard reality for us right here, is that we rely on personal property taxes, and at this point, where we have, and our, this is our ceiling, our personal property taxes do that. The money that we have in our land sale, land sale stabilization and reserve fund is limited and must be spent prudently to best address needs. As we go through tonight, I hope that this has been a quick, yet informative presentation. I urge you to look through the finance committee appropriations booklet for each of the articles before you tonight. For each article with financial impact, the finance committee has reviewed, discussed, and voted on whether or not to approve. In the booklet, you'll find a written rationale of our votes, but please do not hesitate to ask questions. We know not everyone here is as interested in the particulars of town finance and the nitty-gritty details as we are. We find, we think it's fun to sit around for two hours, at least once or twice a month, talking about it. But it's your votes that make the decision, so please, speak up, ask questions, and let's have a good evening. Thank you.
I thank the finance committee for that very lucid overview of where we are on the budget. Have we actually voted Article One? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the reports?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Two, this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,417,182, or any other sum, and take from the special assessment fund the sum of $622,016, or any other sum, for the operation of the town in fiscal 2015. That's the year that begins July 1. Or act in relation there too. Mr. Remley, do you wish to move the motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate, and appropriate the sum of $16,417,182 to take from the special assessment fund, and to take from the special assessment fund, the sum of $622,016 to fund the operation of the town in fiscal year 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and the budget is before us for action. The way we traditionally go through the budget is that I read down through each of the line items. If you wish to, if you have questions about that item, simply shout out "hold." We'll keep a list of the holds and then come back to them at the end of the reading of the full list. And how generous I am on time will depend on how many holds we have. So let us start now with moderator's salary and wages $200. Moderator's expenses $50. Selectman's stipend $15,000. Selectman's salary and wages $47,650. Selectman's expenses $3,200. Administration and finance salary and wages $287,683, which is an increase over the prior year of roughly $6,000. Hold on that. IT services $24,000, same as last year. Professional and technical services $60,000. Tax title and foreclosure $20,000, which is $30,000 less than last year. Administration and finance expenses $55,400, same as last year. Finance committee expenses $425. Reserve fund $90,000. Assessor's stipend $8,500. Assessor's salary and wages $99,256, which is less than the present fiscal year by over $6,000, almost $7,000. Assessor's expenses $41,300, up by roughly $1,000. Audit the town books $25,000. Legal services $75,000. Personnel board expenses $500. Town clerk salary and wages $71,340. General code updates $5,000. Town clerk expenses $5,800. Records preservation $10,000. Elections $13,500, which is up by $6,145. Hold on that. Planning, I assume this refers to the, I'm sorry, refers to?
The previous item.
Okay, okay. It refers to the previous item. Planning salary and wages.
Please skip the registrars.
Registars of voters salaries $750. Planning salary and wages $63,793, up a little bit. Pictometry, M-I-M-A-P?
MIMAP.
MIMAP, okay. Not, okay, that's $9,776. Do you still want to hold on that?
Hold.
Okay.
Hold.
Planning expenses $5,735. MVPC, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, dues $2,260. Zoning salary and wages $900. Zoning expenses $400. Utilities $65,000. Repairs, maintenance, and improvements $65,000. Property-related services $41,000.
Hold.
Hold on that. Town reports $250. Insurance expense $127,296. Police, that's down by quite a bit from this year. Police salary and wages $1,145,000. Police expenses $153,800. Emergency management expense $10,000. Police capital outlay $36,000. Shellfish salary and wages $40,000.
Hold.
Up by $36,000. We hold that. And shellfish expenses $2,500. Fire protection wages $227,705, that's up by $26,000. Call fire wages $157,210. Fire training wages $16,000. Fire company lease payments $150,000. Fire maintenance expense $10,000. Fire insurance premiums $23,000. Fire capital outlay, and that's a blank in the budget, and I guess that's just to show it's intentional. Inspector's salary and wages $195,767.
Hold.
Hold on that. Inspector's vehicle allowance $7,200. Storm water management $5,000. Beaver management $5,000.
Hold.
On beaver management, okay. Beach management plan $5,000. Greenhead control expenses $6,500. Inspector's expenses $10,500. Sealer of weights and measures service fees $2,500. Animal control salaries and wages, salary and wages $22,242. Animal control expenses $3,500. Hydrant service $15,000. Triton regional operating assessment $8,993. Eight mil, okay. Yes, thank you for being very alert to that. I was, I was off by a little bit. $8,993,686.
Hold.
That's a hold on that. Triton regional debt service assessment $169,167, which is down. Whittier regional operating assessment $305,267, which is up by $98,371. We have a hold on the Whittier regional assessment. Whittier regional capital assessment $15,092. Essex North Shore agricultural and technical assessment $62,142. That's up by $37,000. That's up by thirty-seven thousand. Did I hear a hold? DPW salary and wages, four hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. Tree warden salary and expense, salary and wages, three thousand dollars. Tree warden expenses, twenty thousand dollars. Highway maintenance expense, a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Road Improvement Program, forty-eight thousand dollars. Down by thirty-two thousand. DPW capital outlay, nothing. It's a blank, as it was this year. Snow and ice removal, a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. You never know in advance what it's going to be, but you put it in as an estimate. Street lighting, fifty-one thousand dollars. Health salary and wages, sixty-two thousand two hundred forty-four dollars. Health expenses, fifty-five thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. Council on Aging salary and wages, seventy-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. Council on Aging expenses, four thousand ten. Veterans Assessment, twenty-five thousand five hundred three dollars. Veterans Service Benefits, thirty-eight thousand dollars. Library salary and wages, a hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. Library expenses, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Historical expenses, six hundred fifty dollars. Memorial Day, seven hundred fifty dollars. Cost of bonding, that's a blank, as it was this year. Long-term debt principal, one million ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars, down by over half a million dollars. Short-term debt interest, if that's blanked. Long-term debt interest, one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, which is down from this year by seventy-eight thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. All of which is a testament to good financial management, I would say. Essex Regional Retirement Assessment, four hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred five dollars. Unemployment expense, ten thousand dollars. Health insurance expense, on the health insurance expense, that's six hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. Dental insurance expense, twenty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars. Life insurance expense, one thousand three hundred dollars. Medicare expense, forty thousand dollars. So, now, is it customary at this point to pass those items that have already, that got no hold? Do we wait? Do we wait usually?
We cover the holds.
Okay, so we'll go back now and take up each item as to which there's a hold, and we will give the opportunity first to the person who put on the hold. It could be that it's just a question. Okay, who put the hold on administrator and finance salary and wages? Okay? Go to the microphone. Tell your name and your address. And you can face, what I suggest is you face over this way. Then you're sort of facing half of the audience.
Hi, my name is Rich Marks.
Facing everyone here except Finance Committee.
I live at three Longbrook Road. And it's probably a simple question, but I'm wondering, that two hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars, does that include the item Article 24, the additional salaries for three people? And I imagine it doesn't, but it'd be nice if we had some numbers to go with those increases.
Right. Who should I call on at this point? Would it be Tracy or would it be Frank?
Well, I'll start.
Okay.
Right. This line item is now a combined expense of the entire Admin and Finance Department, which includes our Finance Director and Administrator's salary also. And with regard to the article he referred to, I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah.
Article 24, where I talked about the town administrator, has he already appointed her own assistant principal, etc., and is it her?
No, I, it does not include any of that.
It's not included. That article is to change the way appointments are made. It has nothing to do with the budget itself.
And we won't know any dollar amounts on that until next year?
Right. First, it has to become the new law.
Well, that budget is separate for the Assessors Department.
I call upon Tracy Blais.
Mr. Marks, to address your question, the expenses for those costs for those positions are indeed in the line items. They are under the Administration and Finance Salary and Wages and the Assessors' Salary and Wages line items. We've had the positions for a number of years, but in two thousand and eight, when you made the legislative changes that enacted the Town Administrative Form of Government, those positions weren't here. So, we've had people working in them for a couple of years, but they just weren't addressed in that legislation.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, we'll pass on now to the next hold item, which is elections. Who put the hold on? Okay? Speak really loud and I may let you get away with it. But do include your name and address.
We have double the amount of elections in fiscal year fifteen and a piece of semi-antique voting equipment that we're going to need to replace.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Please ask people to come to the microphone, because I know from past experience, if they don't come to the microphone, often it's very hard to hear them, no matter how loud they speak, when they're far from the microphone. And so, folks that want to see the videos will not be able to understand.
So, be forewarned, if you're going to be called on to speak, might as well save some time by getting up here in advance. Okay, the next item is pictometry and the MIMAPs, which I don't understand at all.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Okay. That's a simple enough question.
I can at least start that and then Martha can give you the details. But we understood it in the Finance Committee. About every three years, we need to do a flyover for the whole town to get new maps. And this year, we have to do that again. Is that correct? That's the additional money this year, otherwise it would be what it was last year.
Thank you for asking the question. I was glad to learn, too, what it was about. Yes. Mr. Thurlow.
Alfred Thurlow, 26 Marsh Avenue in Newbury. Why do we have to do it? It didn't get fully answered, so.
Who would like to answer the question? Okay, would you please?
I'm Martha Taylor, town planner, also resident, 159 High Road. And pictometry and MIMAP are two services that we contract with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission for, and they're invaluable for a number of town departments. I, in the Planning Department, use them all the time to generate maps, to look up properties. They allow us to look at aerial views. Pictometry also allows us to look at oblique views. DBW can use them to measure street lengths if they're trying to figure out budgets for road. The police and fire departments can use the aerial images to assess how to approach a building in an emergency. They can help us determine where the wetlands are, Conservation Commission. So, it's really an invaluable tool for us to use almost throughout all the departments in town. Pictometry is something that we have flyovers every two or three years. We didn't carry this in the budget last year because the previous flyover was done in 2012. There was none last year. We are fortunate enough to have enough towns interested in doing it this year, and the image quality keeps improving. And this will also allow us to see things like changes on the beach erosion over the last few years. So, it's really, it's a wonderful service for the town.
Good, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Just to bring the maps up to date. Okay, the next item is, have I got my mark in the right place? Property-related services, which went from forty thousand this year to forty-one thousand in the budget for next year?
Sheila Field, 64 Main Street, and I just, okay. Sheila Field, 64 Main Street, and I just wondered if it was another name for building inspector?
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please? I didn't hear it.
Sheila Field, sixty.
No, I heard that part, but what your question was.
The property-related services.
Yep.
Okay, is that just another name for building inspector?
Oh, okay, so the question is, is that just another name for building inspector? And what is it?
That particular account covers building repairs of all the town buildings, annual maintenance fees, septic system maintenance, cleaning, security, and Comcast for the buildings.
Good, thank you for asking the question. That's cleared up. The next hold is on the shellfish salary and wages, going from four thou to forty thou, from last year's budget to this year's. Who put the hold on that? Yeah, would you come forward?
My name's Lynn Marks. I live at three Longbrook Road, and I'm just wondering why it's such a huge jump in salary.
I'll give the initial short answer. The short answer is that we're now required to have a full-time shellfish constable, I think it is. And it's been budgeted at the difference, I think it's thirty-six thousand dollars. And Tracy, maybe Tracy and Jenny can give you the background on that, but we understand that it's pretty much state law that we've got to do this to protect our shellfish industry here in Newbury.
So, it's a new state requirement that we have this position in place?
I believe so, but maybe. Maybe Tracy or Jenny can clarify that.
Jenny Kramer, Town Counsel. I think that this increase goes with the charter change, which moves a fish commissioner from being elected to being appointed. The problem is that when you have a fish constable that is also a commercial fisherman who is elected, there are conflict of interest laws that apply to that person that make it not possible to do both things at one time. So, moving it to an appointed position allows that person the flexibility to disclose any conflict of interest to the appointing authority, who would be the Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, sorry. And in that way, you can have an effective fish commissioner who is not going to be prosecuted for violating ethics laws.
Would you come back to the mic if you want a further explanation?
So, is it a state law requirement? Or is it just that we don't want the shellfish commissioner to be a shellfisherman? Or we want to allow him to be a shellfisherman and a shellfish commissioner?
There's not a new state requirement that requires this. It's just impossible, the way that it's set up now for an elected fish commissioner, shellfish commissioner, to become a special municipal employee and have a less rigorous application of the conflict of interest laws, for reasons I won't go into. But the move to make that position appointed is important to protect the individual who serves in that position.
So, is the shellfish commissioner a professional shellfish clamor? And that's not a conflict of interest?
It would be if they're elected, but not if you're appointed. Because the conflict of interest law applies differently to elected officials versus appointed officials.
Would you come forward?
My name is Jeff Janver, and I live on 30 Forest Street, Byfield, Mass. I was recently elected fish commissioner in the town. There are three fish commissioners, and they are all elected positions. It's been that way for about sixty years. I have dug clams my whole life. I probably know more about the industry than anybody. Now, what they want to do is make our position an appointed position. I will give up my clamming permit to be appointed. If you're going to give up thirty-six thousand dollars for one person, I think, in my opinion, that it should be divided equally between all three fish commissioners, and we will give up our permits, and then it will not be a conflict of interest. It is wrong, what they are trying to do. I do not like it, and I believe that the people here do not like it. It is wrong. We need more than one person. There's a lot of natural resource out there. We have people walking out on the marsh, and no one is checking those people. Not one man can do that job. Thank you very much.
We've got your point of view.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Mountain. Selectman Mountain will speak next.
Well, I'll explain this from the selectmen's point of view. Hello. There's a little confusion going on here. There are two separate types of positions. There are the fish commissioners, who are, and then there is the shellfish constable. So, the constable is the individual that has the law enforcement capability to enforce the rules that we set up for the clam flats. And so, the fish constable may or may not be one of the fish commissioners. And so, the reason why the selectman put the article on the warrant was to deal with the fish constable rather than the fish commissioners. At least, that's how it was presented to us.
Mr. Thurlow wish to speak?
Having previously identified myself, and probably half the people here know who I am, anyway. Where did this forty thousand dollar figure come from, or thirty-six thousand dollar figure? Was this mandated by the state?
Who would know the answer to that? Yes, Tracy.
The Personnel Board spent a couple of months reviewing and evaluating the position, looking at comparable positions in other communities, understanding what the duties and responsibilities are of a shellfish constable if you want to keep a vibrant operation, if you will. They classified it, and that's where they came up with this amount.
Who is "they"?
The Personnel Board.
Okay, thank you. What happens if we don't do this?
Then you don't have any.
Does that do away with our clamming industry?
I'm sorry?
Does that do away with our clamming industry?
I can't answer that question.
Who can?
I sense that, is there anyone from Finance Committee that is involved in this at all? That knows what's going on? It's, I'm sensing a lack of certainty. Is this something we could take up at the town meeting in the autumn? Is there a necessity that we appropriate the money?
Can I move to table this indefinitely?
Is Mr., is, before you do that, is Mr. Walker, are you? Yep, select, selectman Jeff Walker?
Speaking to the issue, and I think everyone
Speaking to the issue, and I think everyone has made good points today, and maybe it might be prudent to put this off to Fall Town Meeting, but everything here was done in good faith. It's trying to mirror what has been done in other communities, meaning Ipswich and Raleigh and other communities. And everything that has been done here tonight is for working towards a better resource in the river, especially with the amount of green crab and all the other things that people are going to have to deal with. What precipitated this, and Ginny might explain a little more, but I think what she was trying to make clear was, the way we have been doing business before, and you can speak right afterwards, as clam commissioners, setting policy and still working in the resource was an ethics violation. So, that's how this was precipitated. And then, through conscious effort, the rest of the people that were involved in this figured it might be time to move forward and present the other standing thought, which would be to have a regulatory person, like other communities do, which is a single person. Now, that's where we kind of left it, and if people want to put this off and table it, it's fine.
Yeah, I would move to table this part of the article.
Okay, hold up Mr. Thurlow for a minute.
Since it is not state mandated, and I would give up my clamor permit, and I could hold both positions and get part of the thirty-six thousand dollars, okay? But every other town has a constable, then they have deputies underneath them. So, it's not just one person.
Okay, Mr. Thurlow, could I make?
If I could, yes. This time, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we go back to the four thousand dollars that was in the previous year and budget for four thousand dollars.
Okay, we're, I'm told that what we should do first is go through all of the holds, then I will entertain that motion in second, okay? I won't forget it. Yes, Chief Riley.
I'm Chief Riley. The shellfish constable reports to me, and I think there's some confusion as to what's going on here. There are two separate entities. There is the fish commissioners, who are elected officials, who set the policy for the clam flats and the taking of shellfish. Then there's the shellfish constable, who enforces those policies. This came about from a complaint from one of the commercial clamers, who complained to me that having a commercial clamor also be the shellfish constable, you're having somebody enforce policy that they're directly financially affected by, which is a complete ethics violation. I brought that to Town Council. Town Council agreed. This is us trying to clean that up, trying to take care of that ethics violation. Has nothing to do with the elected officials, the fish commissioners. They set the policy. The shellfish constable is the one that enforces the policy, and they're trying to remove a commercial shellfish clam digger from enforcing the rules that affects him financially. So, by removing that position from a commercial clam digger, which I think is in Article twenty-four, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. It has nothing to do with the fish commissioners and splitting money and trying to do anything like that. It's trying to protect the town and the shellfish constable himself from being accused of an ethics violation and from being before the Ethics Commission. Did I explain that correctly?
You.
Okay, thank you.
I thank Police Chief Riley for a very lucid explanation. Mr. Thurlow, I'll give you thirty seconds.
I don't blame you.
Showing distinct vibes.
I am not going to take thirty seconds. I am not questioning the position. I'm questioning forty thou, thirty-six thousand dollars for what's obviously a very part-time job. Clamming is a part-time job. With all the rain closures they go through, it's a part-time occupation now anyway. This is going to be a part-time job. That's all. It's not fit, not right. Pay thirty-six thousand dollars for a part-time job.
Okay, you know, another way to do it would be to amend the dollar amount down. Yeah, if you go all the way back to this year's appropriation, that would be four thou. We will come back to that at the end. There aren't that many more holds. Well, I shouldn't have said that. I should have turned the page first. The inspector's salary and wages, is that the building inspector? It's, so who put the hold on that?
Me and I just.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that would be interesting.
Yeah, it's all, it's not just the building inspector, it's all the inspectors. Plumbing and electrical and, yeah, right. And, and, and just so you all know, what we tried to do this year is to give all the permanent employees a two percent increase. So, some of the increases in the employee, employment-related line items were as a result of that two percent wage increase.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sorry.
Who's over here?
Who's speaking to me? Oh, yeah.
Again, I just want, I want to repeat my request. Please come to the microphone, even from up here. If you're in the very back, it can be very hard for us to understand it. There is no chance that people who want to watch the videos will ever hear what you said, especially when you're in the very back of the room. So, please, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I will, and I will try to be more attentive to that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hold is on beaver management.
This is embarrassing. I don't want to be up here all the time, but we have a problem in this town, a bad problem. We know we do with beavers. I mean, they are just everywhere. Where is this money spent? This five thousand dollars. Is there anybody here that can speak to this?
I hope. Doug.
Okay.
Just begin with us. We've had many problems with be-
Doug, Doug, just explain who you are and where you live.
My name is Doug Packer. I live at one fifty-seven High Road, and I'm your conservation agent. Any of you that have traveled Middle Road realized what we went through when Middle Road went underwater. There was no money in the, no money in the budget to deal with it, and this thing is going to be reoccurring. We still have problems on Middle Road. We've just recently been talking to a trapper. We're now talking about a beaver deceiver device, which are these wire cages that go around these, the culverts and pipes that they find so easy to block. So, this money will sit there, and if we need it, if the occasion arises and we need some money to spend on this, this is where it'll come from.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm Alan Gasper, eighty-six Middle Road, and I don't know how to approach this because I have waterfront property. And I don't know if that's going to lower my assessed value or raise it. But the water is now up to my raised beds, where I have a garden. I no longer have a front lawn, and I can't have a garden this year out near the road. And if it goes up another two inches, it'll be over the road. Let me know what, I'm going to pay more or less.
Well, we better get that trapper on the job. Okay, is there, shall we, shall we pass on that at the moment? The appropriation is the same as last year. Okay. The next hold is on the Triton Regional Operating Assessment. And am I not mistaken, am I mistaken, that that is something that we have to vote, or what is it?
Yeah, okay. This is the, the school budget, and the, on the school budget, the town meeting has no authority to get into the various line items that comprise the school budget. The only say we have is to vote the bottom line up or down. And so, it's here for just a vote up or down. If there is a vote down, and I believe that if two of the communities in the district approve the budget, that it goes into effect, please correct me if I'm wrong. If two of the towns disapprove the budget, it goes back to the Regional School Committee for reconsideration, if I got that right. I wonder if anyone would wish to speak to the subject of the negotiations that have gone into the school budget. Is there, the, the increase is actually not a percentage-wise, a terribly large one, yes? Oh, yeah, who was it? Oh, okay, yeah. What, what is the, who put on the hold? Sorry, what? Who?
I would want to.
Okay, well, if.
Come on for.
Then, then, Mr. Thurlow will assume the hold was yours, and please.
Well, my question is, I'd love to know from the, from somebody from the school, what our student population is there from Newbury now in comparison to past years. That's what I'd like to know.
Does?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is Erica over here, Finance.
Erica.
Hi, I think what you're, if I can ask, is your question, why is the difference so big from last year? It does, it's.
My question was obvious. I want to know the school population, our school population there now, as opposed to? My voice is pretty loud, anyway. School population there now, as opposed to, say, last year? Newbury.
Okay, first of all, on that specific question, does anyone?
I do not have.
I'll, I'll start out with, with that. It's not the actual enrollment from Newbury that determines this. It's our ratio of Newbury's enrollment to total Triton enrollment. And that percentage is about the same as it was last year.
Okay, that's an answer.
Yeah, but, but the reason there's such a big increase this year is last year, because of a blunder by the state, basically. They calculated our assessment last year, our minimum local contribution, which is determined by the state, not by Triton, by the state. They, it went down by two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. We saved two-sixty-five when we were anticipating an increase of two-fifty. So, almost six-hundred thousand we saved last year. Now, they've gone back to the old calculation, which is why it's jumped considerably this year.
They're getting even.
We, we, well, I don't know if they're getting even.
No, they are.
They're just changing the way they calculate it. But, but we caught, we caught a one-year break that really helped us and will cascade forward some way. Notwithstanding, we're still going to be the highest-paying customer of the three.
Okay, thank you. That was a very lucid explanation. I appreciate it. Okay, the next item is the Whittier Regional Operating Assessment. Who put the hold on that?
No hold.
Okay.
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
Because that struck us at the Finance Committee, why the increase was so much. And the simple reason is, our enrollment at Whittier Regional Vocational, Voc Tech, has dramatically increased. Two years ago, it was seven. Now, it's eighteen. And the tuition, so to speak, or the assessment per enrollee is fixed at about eighteen thousand a year. It's expensive for us sending kids to Whittier Regional. So, it's strictly based on the numbers. So, there's where the enrollment question comes into play.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Remley. Okay, the next hold is on the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical Assessment. Is who put the hold on that?
It's the same answer as for Whittier. The enrollment at Essex Aggie has dramatically increased. I can't tell you what the numbers are, but it's more than doubled. And that's why that assessment has gone up so much. It's again related to our enrollment at Essex Aggie.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Remley. The next hold is on the health insurance expense, which is up by sixty thousand dollars. Who put the hold on it? Would you come forward?
Hi, I'm Carol Ferrari at thirty-three Green Tulane, and I think everybody's aware that costs have gone up, the sharing costs that employees pay for their health insurance. And my question is, is what has the town done to try to help control the costs and share with the employees more like all businesses are doing now? And are we, have we considered the GIC for our, our town when it comes to our health insurance?
Okay, who's in a position to answer that? Tracy?
About two years ago, the town activated the Insurance Advisory Committee, and we implemented some planned design changes. The unions were willing to go along with it, which increased significantly the co-pays that the employees were paying, as well as hospital visits. So, they pretty much doubled the amounts that are coming out of their pay. This, we participate in MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, which is a consortium, and it actually brings the prices that we pay down a little bit. But this year, based on our experience and the experience of the group, we're looking at a little bit over, you know, a nine percent increase. So, we have made those changes, and we have put them into place, but this is the number that we received.
You mentioned that it was two years ago. If you look in the, in the, out in the market with all private businesses, it's every year that everybody's having increases, and the companies are, are sharing more of the costs with their employees. So, as a, as a person in a private industry, you realize that everybody in every year, there's more sharing going on, there's more networks. So, that two years ago is a long time when it comes to health insurance changes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Tracy, for explaining it. I think that is the last of the holds. So, we go back to Mr., the issue of the fish constable. And Mr. Thurlow, after hearing Chief Riley's explanation, do you wish to still make the motion to reduce the amount?
I would reduce that amount back to the four thousand dollars in the previous year.
Okay, it's, I should have called you. The motion is to reduce that amount from forty thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. You got that? And, okay. And so- And so, the subject before the board right now, or before the meeting, is that amendment to the budget figure. And does anyone else wish to speak on it? I think we've heard quite a bit on it already. And, yep? Uh, microphone? Right.
I am Matt Kaminsky, 12 Birch Lane, Byfield. My question is just that, have the commercial shellfish fees been increased to compensate entirely for that salary that, that was proposed? I heard that the reason we did it was a complaint by a commercial fisherman, and we wanted to preserve the commercial fishing. So, in my view, they should bear the whole brunt of the cost to do that. So, my question again is...
Question is, have the fees gone up?
Gone up to, not to partially offset it, to entirely...
Who's in a position to answer that question?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
The fees have not gone up yet, at this point in time. That would be something that the Board of Selectmen would consult with the elected shellfish commissioners to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I think the question is before the floor. I'll entertain a motion. The motion would be in, to vote up or down Mr. Thurlow's proposed amendment to the item on the shellfish constable, reflected, it's called Shellfish Salary and Wages, reducing the 40,000 in the proposed budget to $4,000. Now, all those in favor of that? Yes. Okay, I, I thought Mr., I thought Mr. Thurlow did put a motion on the floor. Okay, and it's been seconded. But thank you for bringing up that point of order. Yeah, and Mr. Remley? Okay, yes. Yep, one quick question.
Rich Marks, again. I'm wondering if we go back now, are we endangering ourselves for an ethics violation? Does that all just go away because we decide we don't wanna pay for it?
No.
So then...
I think the question has been answered, no, that it does not go away. And we are in jeopardy of an ethics violation, a conflict of interest violation. So, okay, understanding that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The nays have it. And the amendment goes down. Okay, it's been moved that we do a count. We'll do it by a standing vote. All those in favor of Mr. Thurlow's amendment, which is to reduce 40,000 to 4,000, please rise. I need counters. Mr. Kelly, would you count? This group, who will, can I get to count? Yep. Jim, will you? Okay. Yep, okay. Oh, and I think everyone back here can vote also, right? So...
Anybody standing, everybody out where you wanna be?
Yep.
All those who are in favor of the amendment, please, or none?
Okay. You reported the figures. And, Miss Clark, get to come again. Fifty. Fifty is the count in favor of the amendment. All those opposed to the amendment, please rise. Mr. Kelly, add to your count, this group? Yeah, okay. The moderator only votes to break a tie. Ninety-nine. So the amendment goes down. Now, we'll come to the main motion. I'm sorry, the numbers? Yeah, the, the numbers were ninety-nine to fifty. Okay. And the, now we're back to the main motion. And because of the fact that the amendment went down, the main motion is as it was originally stated by Mr. Remley. So, all those in favor of the town budget, as stated by the Finance Committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, and the town budget is adopted. And we can move now over to... By the way, it's, I shouldn't leave the budget without saying how much work is involved in putting the budget together by the Finance Committee, the Administrator, all of the Department Chiefs at Town Hall. It's a huge undertaking, a ton of work. We owe them all a debt of gratitude. Okay, Article Three, to see... Yes? Yes?
My name is Bob Connors, I live at 39 Annapolis Way. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Okay, got that? All those, this is Article Three, all those in favor? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it.
It's a two-thirds vote?
Uh, it's a two-thirds vote. All those opposed to the motion, please rise. There are none, all those in favor? Aye, and it's unanimous. Okay, Article Four.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be, to be added to the other post-employment benefit account.
It's been made and seconded by the Finance Committee. This is Article Four, in the sheet that you have. All those in favor? Is there any discussion? No one wants to discuss, all those in favor of the article? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Five, will you?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Jespersen?
I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $9,000 to purchase portable radar units.
Mr. Moderator, I second.
Okay, this is Article Number Five. Is there any discussion? Yes?
I'm Steve Mangin on 14th Street. And I have a question about the portable units. They're gonna be set up with cameras on them, so they're gonna see pictures being taken, so you'll get a ticket issued to you on the basis of this machine. And if so, I'm not in favor of the purchase of those devices. So perhaps the chief or someone else can identify what else they're gonna do.
Right. Chief Riley, do you wish to answer the question?
Certainly. I would love to get the units that take pictures, but for $9,000, that's not gonna happen. The unit that we're looking at is a traffic counter and a radar. We get so many speeding complaints on different roads at the same time. We don't have enough officers to deploy for radar. So what this will do is take a traffic count, get an average speed, the times of days, and it will let us know and give us an idea of, on Main Street in this area, at this time is when most of your speeders are. We can better deploy our units for radar operations. That's what this is for. No fancy gadgets. It has a traffic counter, a radar to let us know the speeds, and it has a calculator for dates and times. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, under Article Five? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Six, to see if the town, okay. Do you wish to...
I move the town appropriate, I move the town appropriate the sum of $273,931 for street and road repair work and other related expenses.
I second that, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Yes, Article Seven?
Article Seven, I move that the town of Newbury transfer the sum of $140,000 from stabilization fund to purchase and equip a wheel excavator for our Department of Public Works.
I'll second.
Seconded.
I second that, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote? So, yep?
Keith Stromske, 35 School Street. This is more a question with the transfer station. Now, with the, with the independent or the private contractor managing it, why are we supplying their backhoe for their use while they're there?
This has got nothing to do with the transfer station. This is a piece of equipment for the Department of Public Works to use in the maintenance of our...
Right, but the old one is going to the transportation?
They're gonna make a decision between two units that presently the town of Newbury has two backhoes, and they're gonna trade one of those two in against this purchase. It doesn't do anything, there may be still one available to the transfer station, but this does not deal with that.
The language in the article, though, says that the other one would be going to the transfer station.
No, the article...
Maybe I misunderstood it.
I think it, no, it doesn't have anything to do with the transfer station. It deals specifically with the purchase of this wheeled excavator for other use of the road maintenance and culverts and, and grass cutting and all the rest. We're just, the town will therefore have two, one remaining backhoe that will be in excess. They'll use it to trade in their discretion which one they wanna use.
Mr. Moderator?
Wait, wait a minute. Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Let me address this matter.
Okay. Mr. Connors?
The DPW is trading in their first-line backhoe that is aging. The, we're replacing that with this rubber-tied excavator. The backhoe that's at the transfer station is a 1999. The one we're trading in is a 2002, as I recall. The, I'm sorry, did someone have a question? The 1999 backhoe is currently at the transfer station. The 2002 backhoe is in operation daily at the DPW. That's what's being replaced. And, and the, the thought process behind this is to use the 2002 at the transfer station. We're required to supply the, the equipment. They're required to maintain it. If their maintenance cost goes up, our share in profits at the year-end will go down. The 1999 is then being traded in. So, that's the rationale between buying the new backhoe and how we're reshuffling where they're located.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Okay, are we prepared to proceed to a vote? All, all those in favor of the motion on Article Seven?
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's by two-thirds. So I will start first by asking all those opposed to say, to vote. All those opposed? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Article Eight. Again, do you wish to, Mr. Connors?
Mr. Moderator? I move the town transfer the sum of $55,000 from the land sale fund to lease a pumper for protection to its use for the town of Newbury.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions? Yes, sir, come to the mic.
Dale Williams, Scotland Heights, Newbury. We are now gonna vote on, obviously, a down payment and the initiation of a lease on a vehicle. Does this mean every year we're gonna have to vote for next year's lease on this vehicle? And what happens if next year we say, we're not gonna, we vote against the lease payment? Why are we not more forthcoming about the total cost of the vehicle? Where the money's coming from? Or are we gonna get locked into voting a 10-year lease? Each year, we have to vote a portion of the lease? This kinda scares me, instead of voting upfront the total value of this and figure out how to pay for it.
Okay, Mr. Connors?
Good question. The original appropriation was approved and recommended at a not-to-exceed number of $450,000. Because of the leasing and financing opportunities, we, we've recommended that this be leased over a 10-year period. The total $450,000 will be encumbered from the land sale fund. So it's, the fund will be drawn down on an annual appropriation, unless we choose some other method of paying for this down the road via debt exclusion or what have you. But the, the financing condition right now is so attractive, spreading this out over 10 years worked better for the town. But make no mistake about it, $450,000 of the monies that you saw in, in reserve will be set aside and encumbered from a bookkeeping standpoint.
Mr. Thurlow?
I hate to monopolize this, but what are our options at the end of the 10-year period?
Mr. Connors?
Are there any?
We own the vehicle.
All right.
It's a, it's a 10-year installment sale, basically, Fred.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? This is the, this is the $55,000 for the first lease payment on the pumper. On the, have I got the right one? Yep. All, okay, all those opposed? And the ayes have it. Okay, we're down to Article Nine now. Yes?
$36,000 from stabilization fund to, fund to purchase structural firefighter gear.
Moderator, I second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded under Article Nine. We require a two-thirds vote on this. Does anyone wish to speak to the question, to the motion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those who are opposed to the motion, please say, please say nay. All those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it, and the motion is carried unanimously, unanimously. To see if the town, okay, Article Ten, do you wish to? Mr. Remley?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town transfer the sum of $7,800 from the receipts reserved fire alarm account to make repairs to the fire alarm system.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any, does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11. Okay, Mr. Connors?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $59,410 from the stabilization fund to make various repairs to our public library.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to the point? All those... Two-thirds vote. All those opposed to the motion, please say nay. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it, and it's unanimously. And just in passing, I'd like to say a word that your town library is a jewel. If you're not using it now, you should get over there and see the resources that it has to offer. Article 12?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over this article at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was Mr. Gay.
Correct.
Okay. And...
The article in front of you, Article 12, to see if the town will transfer the sum of $37,000 or any other sum from stabilization to make repairs to the Grange or act in relation thereto. My motion this evening is to pass over this article at the present time and bring it up at the fall town meeting.
Okay. Do... I think we should hear now from both sides as to the necessity of acting on this now. First, I would like a proponent to come to the mic and give the case for why we should do it now.
Mike Bogaros, Selectman, Town of Newbury, and also resident, 177 Orchard Street, Byfield. This $37,000 is the amount of money that I believe is to be used to replace the windows in the Grange Hall. And I believe the selectmen are in favor of this article going forward. And that's basically what it is. The windows are disrepair. We fixed the roof. We took care of a lot of the rotting. And right now, we don't want any more damage to go to... to be done in the building. And the windows need to be replaced.
Is damage being done now? Is damage being done now?
In the winter, there is, and I believe there is some leakage in severe rainstorms.
Okay, Mr. Gay, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Moderator, it was the feeling of the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee that since the Grange has been extended a operating lease from the Town of Newbury, with the conditions that they can apply for, funds from the state, grant funds for these types of projects. They have time to go and look for grant money for this type of repair. We want to give them a due amount of time between this time of the year and the beginning of the fall town meeting to see if they can secure grant funds to pay for these windows. That's the intention of putting this particular article on a passover recommendation to give the Grange a time to raise the funds that they need to do from doing the grant applications for this particular type of service. It isn't that the town is against this or for it. It just feels that this is an opportunity for us to exercise due diligence in the grant funding domain.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mount?
Speaking in my role as a selectman, but also as a citizen at Nine Locken Road...
Can you all hear, Mr. Mount?
No. I'll try to get really close. My voice is going tonight.
Dave, would it be easier to come to this mic or...
I think I'm close enough now. Okay. This information about the grant opportunity came to my knowledge after the selectman had voted to put the article on the warrant. And I think that in the interest of saving taxpayer money, I'm all for grants, and so I strongly support the move to pass over at this time.
Okay. So, okay, and anyone else wish to be heard? So I guess that this could be raised again at the autumn meeting. Now, the vote right now on this article is essentially a negative vote. It's to pass over the article. And with the understanding it could be raised again after an attempt has been made to secure grant money. And so is this a two-thirds? This is a simple majority. All those in favor of passing over Article 9, I believe, Article 12? Yep, Article 12. Thank you for... All those in favor of passing over Article 12, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and we'll pass over that article. Article number 12? No, we just did it. Article number 13?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gay?
I move that the town vote to authorize the continuance of the Recreation Revolving Fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to be credited with receipts from field rental fees to be expended for the purpose of maintaining fields. And further, that the Recreation Committee is authorized to spend up to $50,000 during fiscal year 2015.
The motion has been made and seconded, so this is all for the maintenance of the fields and paying for it from the Recreation Revolving Fund. Are there... Does anyone wish to address the article? All those... Now, this has to be done by a two-thirds vote?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion on Article 13, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article... The motion passes on Article 13. Article 14?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr... Yeah, whatever his name is. Of course. Mr. Jasper.
Clearly late. I move that the town vote to authorize the continuance of the Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5, Clause 72. And that funding in addition to that received by Mass. General Law's Chapter 60B, Section 2, Clause A shall be by sums received from waterway fees, permits, fines, or any other designated sources, subject to all provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2, E and 1/2, to be expended for the purposes of running the Harbor Master function. And further, that the Harbor Master, subject to the approval of the town administrator, is authorized to spend up to $70,000 from this fund during the fiscal year 2015.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone wish to... You know, I'm a little confused about just what the article means. Do you wish to state in clear terms what it accomplishes?
What this... This is one of the... What is... We call a revolving fund account. And that means that monies that are generated from the fees for use of the waterways go back into a fund that then can be used by the Harbor Master. So it's the... Harbor Master taketh and the Harbor Master spendeth, and that's about it.
I think that's a pretty clear explanation of what it does. All those in... Is this two-thirds? It's not? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? The article passes. Article 14, the motion on Article 14. Article 15? Yep. Go ahead, Eric.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from the Waterways Maintenance and Improvement Fund to purchase and equip a boat for the Harbor Master and to trade in or otherwise dispose of the 23-foot Parker as the Harbor Master determines is in the best interests of the town.
Does anyone wish to speak to this? It's fairly straightforward. Mr. Thurlow?
Nobody else gets up. The Harbor Master explained to me this afternoon very nicely what he wanted to do here, and I... Hey, did that go dead then?
Yeah, I think we can... I can hear you.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah?
And I would like to have him come up and do the same for us right now.
Okay. Is the Harbor Master here? Yep, okay. Chief Riley?
Good evening. All of you that use the Parker River have seen the old patrol boat we used to have, a 23-foot Parker. It's a deep V hull. We've had Mike's Marine go over that boat, and it's in a state of disrepair. It needs to be repowered, which is a $13,000 to $14,000 engine. And there's $6,000 or $7,000 worth of rot that needs to be ripped out of it. So we're looking at about $20,000 in repair for a boat that's not conducive to the river now. When that was first purchased, the channel in the river was very deep. You could get that boat in and out of the Parker River very easily. Now with a deep V hull, it drafts too much water. In a dead-low tide, you can't get through. That boat is incapable of accessing areas of the river. What we're looking to do is dispose of that boat, auction it off, and purchase a 20- to 24-foot center console with either an open bow or an open stern. The boat we have now is a 16-foot... 18-foot Lund, and it's basically a metal skiff. When you're out on the river, and I've been the Harbor Master for three months, but speaking with Harbor Master Stokes, who's still working with us, the two things we're going to find on the Parker River for emergency responses are a medical emergency, somebody's having a medical problem out on the river, or somebody overboard in the water. The 18-foot Lund is an excellent boat for patrolling the river and weaving in and out of the moorings and the docks and doing enforcement. Not so good for river rescues. Trying to pull somebody over the side of that boat, two people on the same side of that skiff is going to swamp the boat. We need something with a wide beam, shallow draft, center console, where we can pull somebody out and prone them out and administer CPR or first aid while we're en route to the dock where the ambulances will be waiting. That's what we're looking to do. We've been researching. We think we can get it done between $20,000 and $25,000, and then use another $8,000 to $10,000 to outfit it for what we need. That's what we're looking to do. I hope you have... We have your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief Riley? Okay. All those in favor? Yep? Okay. Yep. Mr. Metcalf? Mr. Powell, sorry.
David Powell, 148 Orchard Street. This is a niggly one, but in the Article 14, we have the Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund. In Article 15, we seem to have the Waterways Maintenance and Improvement Fund. Are these the same funds or different funds?
Who can answer the question? Yep.
Mr. Moderator, it is the same fund.
It is the same fund.
Could we therefore identify it correctly? Because that would appear that Article 15 is empowering us to take money out of an account which we've set up in Article 14. Yes?
Let me compare the wording of the two.
Is the $35,000 coming out of the $50... Up to $70,000? Or is this a different item?
No. I think it's clear enough.
It's two separate votes out of the same fund.
Right.
Ah.
It's a typo.
It's a single fund.
It's a single fund. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. And all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries? Okay. Again, a Finance Committee article.
$31,000 from free cash to fund an inventory and analysis of Newbury's roads.
I second that motion, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. That sounds pretty straightforward. Are there any questions? Yep. Come to the mic, please. And Mr. Gay, you might...
I'll be prepared, yeah.
You've got a mic in front of you, so...
Bernard Field, 64 Main Street, Byfield. This might be a good reason why we are hurting for money a little. We've been paying a man for 10 years or better a real good salary to do that job. We have two people in the DPW that could do that job. And if we do hire somebody to do it, they tell us what to do, they're going to go ahead and just do it their way anyhow. They just did Booty Street. They didn't do the drainage. They didn't do the grinding. So that's what any intelligent person is going to tell them to do. And they're going to say, "We can't afford it. We're not going to do it." So I'd say we don't spend that.
Mr. Gay, is that responsive to the motion?
No. The motion is essentially for the town to purchase a software package, which we've looked into extensively, that will, first of all, categorize and inventory every single road in the town of Newbury. Upon that inventory, and the roads have been inventoried, we will actually have a consulting organization go out and assess the quality and composition of each one of the roads independently, not from town employees, but somebody who knows what they're doing. To give us a...
So you're saying the town employees don't know what they're doing?
The town employees...
You have people that are well-qualified to use them.
Let me tell you, the Department... The DPW staff has been reduced substantially. This is going to give us an independent analysis of the roads. Give us a chance to look at when money becomes available on Chapter 90 funds to do a road, that we will know which roads require our attention. The Town of Newbury is an extensively large area, a lot of roads, as you know, and a lot of roads are in tremendous disrepair. We wanted to take a little bit of objectivity by categorizing those roads that need to be addressed first and with the most attention necessary. That is the purpose of this particular article.
Okay, if you're going to talk, talk into the mic, please. Okay.
I do apologize for buttoning in. We could disagree without being disagreeable.
Absolutely.
But I really do disagree with you.
Well, I originally brought up the subject myself, that why couldn't we employ, you know, senior citizens to go out and do this for us or other people instead of hiring the consulting organizations to do it? And my... The response I got was that their qualifications and attention to detail is not going to be adequate enough for us to make proper business decisions on which roads should be addressed. I grant you that once the road has been identified as the top of the list or the top five roads in town, then it's going to go into an assessment of what needs to be done. And I guarantee you that at that point in time, capital planning and selectmen will be responsible for monitoring the proper job gets done. This is to give us a sense, because as you know, in the Town of Newbury, everybody can point to a road they feel is in disrepair and should be the one first addressed. What we want to do is take kind of an objectivity to this whole process by saying there are roads across the town, and somebody can say of these roads, these are the top five that need our attention. And these are the reasons why, not a personal opinion.
I still say we have the people right now.
Yeah, we know. We know what you say, sir. I think it's pretty clear what the difference is, and I think that we're prepared to vote on the article.
She has a question.
I'm sorry. Do you wish to be heard on this one? Okay.
Shirley Walton, 7 Anker Way, in Newbury. We are going to have airplanes take photos of the whole town. They can do the photos of the roads at the same time.
Okay, you're suggesting a photo of the road?
It really is a little different. There are so many different component parts to this. Upon my research of looking at what constitutes an assessment, there is just not the roads. It's the culverts, the conditions of the roads, the potholes, the composition of what is that road made of? How long ago was it addressed? Was anything done to it? And some of our roads have been improved, and they will go into the inventory as roads... And some of our roads have been improved and they will go into the inventory as roads that are in good shape. So, there's, it's gonna take a look at every single road objectively, put the inventory in. When the money becomes available and we start to address our most significant rees, roads, as, as the selectmen have said, one of our major concerns, we will know objectively what roads should be the ones that we focus in on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gay. A, a good discussion, all those in favor of the article. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We are, uh, article seventeen. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Sturgis.
I move to pass over this article.
Okay. Do you wish to explain why?
Yes, uh, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee has looked at this article and feels that the effort needs a, a little more work and is best brought forth in the fall town meeting, uh, in conjunction with the planning board. The finance committee endorses the update to the town master plan and open space and recreation plan and we feel the town will be better served to revisit a more fully-defined effort in our fall meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jespersen. Uh, town council, do we need a vote on a motion to pass over?
Yeah, motion to pass over.
Yep, okay, this is a motion to pass over the article. All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we're down to bylaws. The first one is article eighteen on the Community Preservation Act and, uh, yes, Mr. Bayer. Selectmen there.
Mr. Murray, I move that the town vote to accept sections three to seven, inclusive chapter forty-four B of the general laws known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including, one, the acquisition, preservation, and/or rehabilitation of historic resources, including historic buildings, artifacts, documents, and sites. Two, the creation of rehabilitation of outdoor recreational facilities, including parks, playgrounds, athletic fields. Three, the acquisition, creation, and preservation of land for scenic areas, drinking water supplies, beaches, marshes, forests, pastures, and agricultural lands. The acquisition, creation, support of local housing needs for families, seniors, veterans, and others. The amount of set surcharge on real property shall be one and a half percent of the annual real estate levy against real property commencing in the fiscal year two twenty sixteen and that the town hereby accept the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under section three E of said act, one, property owned and occupied by a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or for low-moderate income senior housing in the town as defined in section two of said act. Two, one hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, and, three, one hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of class-three commercial property and class-four industrial property as defined in section two A of said chapter fifty-nine.
Second. Um, do I hear a second?
I seconded.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Now, a point of clarification, town council has explained to me that the effect of a positive vote here will be to cause the adoption of the Community Preservation Act to be put on the ballot. The vote here in favor of it will not automatically do it, it will put it on the ballot. Do I have that correct? Okay. So, with that understanding, does anyone wish to be heard on the matter?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sorry, who's, okay.
Uh, we'll see if my voice lasts. The reason I supported this is that, as you've heard, we definitely are having problems, you know, making our budget balance, which is required by state law. The reason I support this approach is that it's much preferable, in my mind, to an override because it exempts the low-income families and, and moderate-income families, you know, as so stated in the article, which we cannot do with an override. The other thing is that it gives everybody the hundred-thousand-dollar exemption, something else we can't do in an override. So, I felt that personally, that this is a way of achieving some of our revenue goals without unduly burdening those folks that, uh, would find it difficult to pay the extra property tax. What many people do not realize is that in our town, based on household income, we don't tax ourselves anywhere near high, any comparable community in the entire Commonwealth. In fact, the only communities that tax percentage-wise, their households at a lower rate than us, are typically places like Lawrence where they get a lot of federal aid to help them with our budget. As you've seen, we don't get very much in the way, we get none in the federal realm and very little at the state realm. So, I feel very strongly that this is an approach to solve some of our needs. It can serve senior housing, it can serve, uh, putting in those baseball fields on the land we bought for recreational purposes that never went in. It could go to covering expenses like the one on the Grange Hall, 'cause that's considered an historic structure. So, there's a lot of ways that we can use these funds to meet things that we would like to do but can't afford to do without something like an override. And as I said, I see this option much more equitable than what we would have to do with an override where we cannot exempt anyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mountain.
Dale Williams, Scarlet Heights. Um, I'm opposed to this, uh, at this time. Uh, number one, I have a real problem with just raising money for projects in the future that are unknown. Number two, I have a problem raising public funds for potentially using it for a private enterprise or private property or any other private structure, which has happened in other towns. Number three, uh, we're trying to raise money now to spend it later. When we have a budget problem ongoing year to year to year, we can't even pass an override at eighty dollars a household to fund ongoing budgets. And we're trying to set money aside for the future unknown use. And finally, I think it should have been clearer on here that, yes, this will have to go to a town-wide vote, not just passing it tonight. And I would say, I would argue, there were several towns now that are voting it out. Once you vote this in, you're, you're in for at least five years and then you can vote it out. And there are towns now voting it out. Uh, and secondly, the state has not let, lived up to their obligation to match the money raised by the towns, uh, and they're averaging about a twenty-five to thirty percent match, much like they promised regional transportation in the schools and full funding for special ed, et cetera. So, I'm opposed to this because I would rather see us fund our budget for things we know and have and ongoing right now that we need to fund the town than to set aside this money for projects unknown in the future and tack on a sixty or seventy dollar per household forever. Thank you.
Right, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Ms., Mr. Moderator, I, I would, I would respect what David said and I would also respect what Dale said and I think it makes great sense to think of it in those ways. The only thing is, tonight, you're voting to put this before the town and that also makes sense in some ways, too. So, you're not voting to pass this, this is not binding. Uh, you're voting to put this on the ballot to let the other folks in your town decide what's good for the town.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Erica, Erica.
I also want to reiterate that this is just to put this on the fall ballot. I believe that Mr. Williams and many others here have raised good points. This is a complicated issue. I think that we need the time and I think that the debate can be happening, but that the decision, we should put this on the ballot so that the voters at the polls this fall can make a decision after seeing more presentations and learning more about the Community Preservation Act and how it is being used throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay. Do you still wish to be heard?
I agree with what everybody's saying about, um, looking at it and considering, having more considerations, but one question I had was, um, when a, a project comes up, how does the town decide whether or not they agree with that project? Is it made, the decision's made by a committee or how, how is that, that particular project or appropriation decided upon?
Mr. Moderator, if you wish, yes.
It's kind of embarrassing being on the media committee and having so many audio problems, but, uh, you know, we're working, this is a bad space to work in, as many of you know. But anyway, getting back to the question that.
Really?
Really? I can hear me, just fine. Can you hear me now? Everybody in the back? Okay, great. Uh, the process that we're required to follow, should we choose to pass the act at the ballot box, is that a committee will be set up to review applications. So, individuals, you know, town departments, whatever, can submit applications for use of these funds and then the committee, uh, will be responsible for prioritizing projects and determining which ones, uh, would be funded. So, uh, and I will assure you that if we do pass this, that I will do my very best to make sure that we have a good committee that represents all the interests in the community so that, uh, we can feel comfortable with the funding decisions that are made on how to use these funds. There's a lot of constraints imposed upon us. Fortunately, they've gotten a little less constraining than they used to be and if we do put this on the ballot, uh, then, as we just pointed out, we can provide much better information to you. I mean, to get into the details of what we can and cannot do with these funds and so forth would keep us here another hour. I don't wanna be here an extra hour and I don't think most of you do, so I just encourage you.
Mr. Mountain, just a point of clarification, who appoints the committee? If you know. Is it the selectmen?
Set up.
It's set up under state law. Who are the members?
The moderator.
Okay, I, I wish, Mr. Powell, I'm, uh, no, you, you come ahead. Mr. Powell will be next, if he still has a question.
I don't believe the selectman answered the question. They will put a committee together to recommend and prioritize projects, but it's my understanding that it must come back to town meeting to pass any specific project. That was the question asked and I don't think he answered that portion of the question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Powell.
Uh, David Powell, one forty-eight Orchard Street. I don't know all of the details, but the committee has a makeup which is mandated by the state law and it includes representatives from such bodies as the planning board, the conservation commission, the historical commission, et cetera, et cetera, plus a number of citizens nominated by the selectmen. I would like to continue on a slightly different tack and ask that.
Make it brief.
We do not, in fact, vote on this article as stated because we can't accept. We can only, in this gathering, ask to have it put on the ballot. Am I not right?
Yeah, we're, we're voting to have it put on the ballot.
Yeah, but that's not what.
That is the meaning of the article.
No, it is.
So, the, the vote is whether to put it on the ballot. Okay, have I got that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
That, that is a model language by the state's Community Preservation Commission. They have sample warrant articles and motions and this is the way that it comes right off the state, the state's website.
For a town meeting.
To put it on a ballot vote. That's how the state law works.
Hmm, well, they don't seem to speak American English, do they?
I, I'd also just like to clarify that the, uh, committee would recommend, would make recommendations as to uses for the funds and then the appropriations would have to be made by town meeting, project by project by project. So, it will be, it will come back to this body to vote on whether the committee's recommendations are ones that, that the town meeting would like to support or not.
Okay, uh, yep.
Bud Kelly, twenty-four School Street, Byfield. Uh, should we, for expediency and clarity, amend the article to read, we don't amend it to say that it's, it's just putting it on the ballot?
I'd suggest if, that if we're following the state form, we better stay with the state form, which has an accepted meaning.
Sure, but I don't see it say that this puts it on the ballot, so that's why you're gonna have to clarify and say it goes on the ballot.
Yeah, I, I like you.
It's already clear that this goes on the ballot.
Mr. Power, Powell also, but we are assured by, yeah, by, by town council that that is the effect of what we do. If we vote in favor of this, the question of accepting the Community Preservation Act goes on the ballot. Okay? Now, is there, uh, I see a couple of hands raised. Does anyone really want to speak seriously? Please come forward.
Steve Manjore on Fourteenth Street, and I wish to associate myself with the remarks made by Dale previously. I wish to associate myself, the remarks made by Dale previously, I think he raises a lot of good issues. As the moderator pointed out at the beginning, town meeting is the crucible of democracy. So, those of us that are here and are interested in this subject are here and we can vote to not put it on the ballot. I think that we should be aware that the CPA is an ever-changing piece of states, piece of, of state law. The conditions under which money can be allotted are changing. I think we're buying a pig and a coke by voting to put this thing on the ballot because we don't know what the state is gonna do to change the law in the future, to make changes that we might not otherwise support.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any, any further remarks, uh, seeing Mr. Thurlow? Do you wish to, uh, please make your remarks, ten seconds or less?
I'm usually pretty quick, but we should be aware that all this really is, is an override and a non-specific override at that. I would rather vote on a specific override than this, which is an open-ended thing, which you can't get out of for a long period of time.
Right. Uh, thank you, that's very, very clear. Okay, I think we've heard the points of view. I'm sorry, yep, Mr. Jespersen.
Damon Jespersen for Marsh Meadow Lane. The advantage to this over, direct override, is that there are matching funds from the state, which there are not for an override. And even if the state only gives twenty-five or thirty percent of the matching fund, that is twenty-five or thirty percent that we do not have and we do not have to pay for directly. So, there are distinct advantages to this form. Thank you.
Very good point, thank you for making it. Mr. Thurlow.
Just rebuttal, please, but they are not matching funds. If you look up matching in the dictionary, it's one hundred percent and it started at one hundred percent with this program and now it's way down from that and it goes down every year.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Moderator, I want to correct.
I'll, I'll recognize Mr. Russo, Dr. Russo, because he has not been heard from yet.
My name is Vincent Russo, sixteen Seaview Lane, Newbury. Uh, Newbury has a Newbury Improvement Trust, which is a charitable fund that we have. So, if people want to donate money to the town, it's a tax-deductible donation. Have we been using the Newbury Improvement Trust at all for anything?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Russo. Okay, now, I will put the question to a vote.
Sorry, I, I think the question should be answered by someone who can answer that and then I also had a comment, too.
Okay, do you have someone in mind?
Uh, it's gonna take. Okay, okay, I'll, well, well, we're, I want to correct, Fred and I are good friends, but sometimes he gets his facts wrong.
Hello, can you hear me now?
I'm sorry, my voice is failing tonight. Uh, I was just gonna say Fred and I are good friends, but I think he's got some of his facts wrong. What's been changing isn't so much the state law, it's been the match. Originally, the match, and match can be any percentage, there's nothing that says it has to be a hundred percent. Originally, the intent was for the match to be a hundred percent. Back at a time when the revenues, a lot of this money comes from the fees and so forth that are paid at the registry of deeds. When the housing bubble was bubbling away, all kinds of stuff, permit fees, so on, were coming in, no problem making the hundred percent match. Then, of course, we had the Great Recession, the housing bubble burst and so those revenues declined and things got as low as the twenty percent sort of level.
percent sort of level. Last year, the state legislature realized that this was a problem, and so they supplemented the funds and got things back up to the 50 percent level. I still argue that 28 percent or whatever, which, I can't remember the exact low number, is still a hell of a lot better than zero. And, and again, it's not as open-ended as some would believe, because at the end of the day, as we heard, the individual projects that are recommended still have to come back to town meeting for approval, just like we did for, you know, the pumper truck and so on and so forth. So it's not open-ended and some mysterious committee hands out money behind closed doors. Ultimately, it's we, the voters, who decide which of these projects that are proposed would get funded through these monies.
Okay, Dave, thank you very much. Mr. Moderator.
Just one quick statement. What I see happening in this town, and it doesn't take a crystal ball, it seems it's very hard for us to get an override through. If it's very hard to get an override through, and if an override is almost impossible and continues to be that way, this was maybe a way of putting some available capital that could be used for some of the needs of the town. Just remember, as things go forward, it's going to be public safety and all the things that, that the town needs, such as the roads plowed, and, and, you know, when we talk, let's say, about a wheeled vehicle, you know, it keeps the bushes back so people don't, on corners get, I mean, once we lose public services because we can't pay for other things, that's what the selectmen and the finance committee are always looking to try to be able to, to put forth some recommendations or some thoughts, because it seems that an override is always impossible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, we will do the question now. The question before you is whether the, the town meeting will vote to put the Community Preservation Act acceptance on the ballot for the town to vote on. All those, is this straight majority? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? I cannot tell from the votes, we're going to have to have a count. So if you are in favor of putting it on the ballot, please stand now. Mr. Kelly, you'll count over here. Mr. Ramley, you'll count on the right side. Yes, this is for ayes, putting it on the ballot. Frank, you're going to have to do a count on the noes. Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Mr. Kelly. I ask the clerk, what is the tally? 66 ayes, 62 nays. So.
Can we do a recount? Oh, come on.
Nope, nope.
When you got to separate the people, something really secret.
No, we, we just, we just sep, we just separated the people. I won't entertain that motion. Okay, move on to Article 19. Now, this article is, says it's as written in the Finance Committee Appropriations Book. Do you have that booklet? The Finance Committee Appropriations booklet? This is, I'll hear from Mr. Weiss on what it's about. It's about adopting a new site plan bylaw. It's an amendment to our zoning bylaws to adopt a new site plan bylaw. Sir.
John Weiss, Chair of the Planning Board, 3B Black Duck Circle.
Excuse me, I, I think, do we have a motion on this?
No.
Okay, would you make the motion?
I, I move that town vote to amend Article 9, Special Regulations of the Town of Newbury's zoning bylaw, as set forth verbatim in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, you may speak. This is, this brought to our attention last year by town council after our last town meeting, and at that meeting, it was pretty clear that the provisions in our site plan review needed some work, and so we had a subcommittee that spent some time, looked at those provisions that existed in neighboring towns, and in, and in fact, ours was lacking. So as a quick summary of where we are with this, we are making recommendations that would have two tiers of plans that would, and projects that would come before us. The first tier would be those projects, new projects, or rehab of between 1,000 and 1,999 square feet. And those are Level 1 projects. They would not require a public hearing, and so that onus and difficulty would be taken off of those smaller projects. But the larger projects would still require a public hearing. At the same time, one of the reasons why we did this is that in, when, when the bylaw was written back in 2006, we didn't allow multifamily in the town anywhere. But in the last three years, we've brought forward changes to the bylaw to allow three and four family structures in both Byfield Village and in the Upper Green. And so those would be allowed in the new provision. And then finally, it's not in the bylaw, but it's in our procedures. Right now, the site plan review can take upwards of 185 days, which is much too long. And so we're recommending that that be cut back to about 110 days for the Level 1, Level 1 projects, and about the same for the Level 2. So that's the summary of what's before you, to amend our site plan review procedures.
Thank you, sir. Good explanation. You remain up if there are questions. Any questions on the article? Hearing none. We'll put the article to a vote. All those in favor, oh, we need a two-thirds. All those opposed to adopting the new site plan article, please rise. All those in favor of adopting the new site plan article, please say aye. And the ayes have it over there. Don risers. Okay, thank you, sir, very much. Okay. This is.
This is Medical Marijuana Number 20.
Okay. This is the article, Number 20. It's on the subject of medical marijuana dispensaries.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town, town vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw to add provisions for registered marijuana dispensaries, as set forth verbatim in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
A motion's made and seconded.
And if I could just give some background to this. We had a public workshop in this, in the winter. We also had a public hearing on this issue, and we also did a field trip to a facility that is, believe it or not, Portland, Maine, has had this for quite, for the last two years. And the background for us is that in 2012, 63 percent of Massachusetts voters and 69 percent of Newbury voters voted to approve medicinal marijuana. And it's in the form mostly of a registered marijuana dispensary, which is a not-for-profit facility that can cultivate and sell medicinal marijuana. The medical marijuana is available only to qualifying patients, and they need to have a relationship with a doctor, who in fact writes prescriptions for that, that then is then licensed by the Department of Public Health at the state. Now, the key for us and why we're doing this is that the state says any municipality cannot, cannot deny a use in the town. Now, as perhaps unlikely as it is for it to come to Newbury, that means that if someone wanted to come here, and if we don't have a bylaw, they can go anywhere, instead of where we want them to go. So that what we have, and I'm going to bring forward to you and explain, is where we think it might make sense. So statewide, where they are is that there are 35 medical marijuana facilities that are potential in the Commonwealth, up to five in each county. Right now, decisions were made on a preliminary set of applications in January, and 20 of these facilities have been tentatively approved. Maybe you're reading articles in the Globe about these things, and there's all sorts of stuff going on about them, but the point is that they're only preliminarily approved. In Essex County, two have been approved, one in Haverhill and one in Salem. And then additionally, two cultivating facilities have been applied for, but I don't think have been approved, in Amesbury. So this, I just want to give you a sense, the Wellness Connection is this place in Maine. We visited them in December. They, we met with the city council member who sponsored the facility. It looks more like a doctor's office than it does, for example, like a liquor store. It doesn't look like a liquor store, it looks like a doctor's office. And it's well-designed, and in the two years, there's been no police reports in the city of Portland from this facility. So we were encouraged by that. So what we're proposing is that this, any facility would be restricted to our business and light industrial area, which is the large area going from Boston Road up to the town line, off Route 1, also directly to its west, in the area around Scotland Road, where the police department, the state police are, and then down near Pearson, the entire Pearson Plaza, near Route 95. Any RMD, that means a registered marijuana dispensary, that came to the town, would have to be at least 1,000 feet away from a school, a playground, or a public housing facility, of which we have none. It would have to be 500 feet from the youth center, childcare facility, a library, or public park, and 300 feet from residential property. The applicant must be registered with the State Department of Public Health, and it will be sufficiently buffered, abutting properties, provide convenient, safe, and secure access, and that the permit is valid only for the applicant, and it's not transferable to someone else. And then I had a map, but basically, if you understand where this is, it's the, no, I'll see if I can find that map. See if you can, you have, you've got it, right? Anybody has any questions, you can ask, but anyway, okay?
So under the, under the new bylaw, correct me if I'm wrong, what we'll be doing is moving from a situation where now people have a right to have a marijuana facility, but it would be totally unregulated by the town, to an adoption of a bylaw which would, which is set forth in detail in the Finance Committee book, which would restrict where they can be and put on other restrictions as to proximity to schools, playgrounds, et cetera. So that's the question before us. And are there, does anyone wish to speak to the question? Yes, sir. Please make it quick.
Steve Manchin on 14th Street. I just have a question, especially since you've come in.
Your mic isn't on. Do you want to use this mic? Yep.
I'm Steve Manchin on 14th Street, and given that we're going to get some fine map pictometry done, can someone give us a map that shows us if you're 300 feet from a residence, 1,000 feet from something else, 500 feet from something else, what parts of the town are going to be eligible to have such a facility? Or are we effectively wiping out the town?
No, we're not. I deferred because of time not to do this slide presentation, but we do have a map that shows you the areas.
And the, if, even if we-
Right there.
Okay.
So, so let me, so this is the entire town. That large thing that looks like a boot is our, is our business and light industrial area that goes from Boston, Boston Road up to the town line. And it's all, and it's pretty much an entire business and light industrial area. That's the area that we, we and the selectmen and others have been very much trying to get industrial use to locate in that, in that area. The area to the far, to the west of that, the kind of the long, narrow piece, is a small piece on Scotland Road that is where the Police Academy is. And then the other parcel, which is down near Route 95, again, it's got a black line around it, is the Pearson Plaza. So nowhere else in town, that's roughly 4 or 5 percent of the town, or something like that, not, not a majority.
Okay, remember, the question before you is not whether you're in favor of marijuana dispensaries, it's are we in favor of regulating where they can be located in the town? So the question is, shall we adopt the bylaw? Is this a two-thirds vote? Because it's a zoning item, it's a two-thirds vote, all those opposed to the motion, please say nay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. The ayes have it by more than a two-thirds vote, by a two-thirds vote. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. You have another article? Okay. Which one? This is the, oh, the flood, the flood plain panels.
Our final issue here this evening is the, oh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt the new plan panels as set forth and as, and to amend, excuse me, certain related provisions of the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Articles 2 and 4, as set forth verbatim in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion on it? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Go out to two-thirds. All those opposed to the motion, say nay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. The ayes have it unanimously. Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss, very much. And we're down to the Article 22. And Mr. O'Connell, would you make the motion under the article?
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 87 of the Code of the Town of Newbury, entitled Stormwater Management and Illicit Discharge and Erosion Control, as set forth verbatim in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Okay, again, correct me if I'm wrong in explaining it this way, that it basically transfers the function of, from the Planning Board to the Conservation Committee, of policing the erosion control and whatnot, okay? Is, is this another two-thirds? Straight majority? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? And it carries. Okay, the Capital Planning Committee, one Article 23. Okay. Mike Bogaros.
Mike, go up to the mic.
Mike Bogaros, Dubby Selectman. Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article at the present time and possibly have it reheard at the Fall Town Meeting. The reason being, the selectmen were in favor and the Finance Committee was opposed, and I believe what we have to do was probably do some more work on this in the, in the interim between the Capital Planning and the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, and so we could have a good proposal for.
Okay, so pass over it at this time in hopes of getting both boards on the same page.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bogaros. That's the motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of passing over. Aye. All those opposed, nay. We're down to Article twenty-four. Mr. Mountain, this is the vote to amend the, it's a petition to the legislature, right?
So I, I move the article as described, and I can explain more as soon as I have a second.
Okay, now, can you pull the microphone closer to you and explain what the motion would do?
Well, I think I need a second first.
Second.
Okay, let's, second, second.
As many of you know, a few years back, we made the move to the Town Administrator Form of Government, and now that we've been working with that form of government, we felt that there was a need to make a few changes, and this mainly has to do with appointments and so forth. So without getting into all the gory details, I'll just go over the summary of Article twenty-four, which is, number one, to make the Fish Commissioners appointees of the Board of Selectmen as opposed to elected officials. Number two, clarify that the Town Administrator has the authority to appoint her or his own assistant, and that the principal assessor and his or her clerk, in recognition of the fact that the principal assessor should be a person who is especially fitted by education, training and experience to complete the duties of that office, and will ensure that applicants for that position would be subject to customary hiring practices such as review and comparison of applicants' resumes, as well as an interview process. And three, change the timeline for budgeting to reflect the realities of the process and give town officials more flexibility in reacting to changes in the state budget and local aid reimbursement figures by replacing the following sections with the language below and so on. And so, basically, this is coming from our experience with this relatively new form of government for us, and so if people, as I understand it, we could modify this, we could still amend this and approve it, but the basic intent is to continue to increase the level of efficiency and professionalism that we have in town government.
Well, do, are you proposing an amendment to it now?
I'm not proposing an amendment, but I do believe that we have, it is a possibility if someone has a concern about a particular part of this. I'll leave it to Town Council, but this is a petition, the trouble is with the town charter, you know, this is kind of the overall operating methodology for the community, and it has to be approved at the state level for a charter change, that's, this is, would initiate that process.
Okay, does anyone wish to be heard on the subject? Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know many of you, I went to school with your kids, and I know other of you because my kids went to school with your kids. I graduated from Triton High School, I've been here my entire life, and I have been on your Board of Assessors since nineteen ninety-eight. I enjoy my position here, and anything that comes across our warrants that is going to reduce the amount of elected representation that we hold in our town government, I'm opposed to. We have forty-one positions, from what I understand from the Clerk's Office, forty-one positions that are elected in our community of almost, what, seven, eight, nine thousand residents. So I'm opposed to parts of this. I certainly don't, I'm not opposed to Section Three, which is to change the timeline for budgeting. I think that's very important. Having been the chairman of your board, budget time is very, very challenging and everything's a rush, so I, I think that that's a very good one to keep there. But number one and number two, I'm opposed to. So if there's a way to amend this, so that one and two, if there's interest by the people that are here tonight, I'd be very happy to put that amendment forward. My suggestion for the amendment would be that the first one gets stricken, and that there is no change in how the Fish Commissioners are appointed, or I should say, excuse me, elected. And then for the second position, this happens to hit our offices in particular, we have been part of the hiring process. Our Board of Assessors, your three people here, actually work very, very closely with the office people in the Assessor's Office, the Principal Assessor and the Clerk. So it's important for us to be part of the hiring process for the, how everything synchronizes in our office. So to, to say that it's out of our control, again, one more thing where I just would not like to see our voice as a town resident be muted. So I'm open to anybody if they'd like to have any suggestions on this, or I can write it up and we can put it to vote.
Okay, anyone else wish to be heard on the subject? Yes, sir.
Bernard Fields, sixty-four Main Street, Byfield. I can't imagine that there isn't a lot of people here that have had relatives that have fought and died so that we can vote. We should not give it up, it's nothing to do with these people here, it's not against anybody, it's just one of our rights that we really, really should keep.
Thank you. There, I know, one of the problems we have in approaching this article is that there are several different subjects that are packed into the same article. I wonder if it would be worth passing over, just as a suggestion, would anyone be interested in passing over the article to let it be sorted out, broken out into pieces that we could vote on individually? Does, does anyone feel that way? Does anyone wish to so move? Okay, Mr. Kelly has made a motion, is there a second? There's a second to it. Yes, Mr. Bayer.
Sorry, I had to do a little research on this. Okay, one of the things I would like to point out is the Fish Commissioners met and they vote to put this article here. Now there's a big argument about it. What's going on?
Okay, anyone else wish to be heard on the subject? The subject, yep, go ahead. No, just identify yourself.
Jeff Jamrin, thirty, Forest Street, Byfield, Mass. I don't recall us to bring this here to be an appointed position. The reason being why you want us to be in an appointed position, which I do understand, is to comply with the state and not be in violation of ethics. But if we give up our claiming permit, that would not put us in violation with the Ethics Commission.
I, I sense we're talking about a subject of a previous article.
This has to do with what Mr. Bayer just said about saying that the Fish Commissioners brought this.
Being appointed, yeah, okay.
Right?
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Before you, before you leave, the only thing is, with an elected position, how is that going to be controlled in the respect that some folks that will be elected might not want to give up their right to claim?
Well, that's their decision to make. If they don't want to give up their permit, then I guess they can't be a Fish Commissioner.
Well, then, we'd have to set those regulations in place too, and I don't know, and Town Council would have to look at that to see if that would re, you know, meet the required thresholds for the, for the Ethics Commission.
I don't understand why you would not, I mean, it's been that way for years.
Okay, I think the, the motion before the floor right now is to pass over this article in hopes of receiving it back at a future town meeting, separate it out into the different pieces. The, the article is what lawyers call a multifarious motion, and the court rules it out of order. But this is not a court, and it's up to you whether you want to have it in order or rule it out. So the, the vote right now is on the subject.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, because the original motion was made and seconded, we have to deal with that before we can entertain a new motion, which would be the motion to pass over.
That sounds like it may be a good point to parliamentary procedure. So which, what order do we do it in? What is the, the motion to pass over? Is that a substitute motion?
The main motion needs to be dealt with.
The main motion needs to be dealt with.
That would be essentially a negative vote on this.
But then if, if the main motion is dealt with and either adopted or denied, that makes the motion to pass over moot.
Because you pass over an article, not a motion.
Excuse me, wait, 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 please, I'm listening to Town Council, and by law, it's Town Council who advises the moderator on points of law.
So the motion can't be passed over, only an article can be passed over, so it's out of order to pass over something once there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, okay. There is a, okay, I guess we have to go back to the main motion, which is on the floor. And, Mr. Kelly?
Could you withdraw? Yes, it could be by a friendly request to withdraw. The person who made the motion opposed.
I leave that up to Town Council to advise me.
You want the main motion to be withdrawn?
A friendly request to withdraw the main motion.
Okay, just, just to clarify, only articles can be passed over, motions cannot be passed over. So the motion to pass over was out of order. The only thing before you right now is the main motion, which is the one that David Mountain read, and I guess it's up to him if he wants to withdraw his motion, and then there would have to be a second.
Okay, Mr. Mountain, do you wish to speak, or you can remain mute if you wish.
I choose not to withdraw.
Okay, that's very, very forthright. So let's have a vote on the, on the motion, which is to adopt the, the multifarious motion. Okay, all those in favor of adopting it, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I rule that the nays have it. And as Mr. Powell said, that was all done in a friendly way in hopes that we'll see the pieces brought back as separate motions at the next town meeting. Okay, we're down to Article twenty-five, which has to do with a well which was inadvertently put in a town way, and the well does not apparently interfere. Who is the moving party on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to pass over this, I have been informed that it has been resolved.
The whole matter is to be resolved?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do that, okay. So all those in favor of passing over it?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article twenty-six, which is one of those lengthy ones written in the Finance Committee Booklet.
Mr. Move to pass over this article in order to give time to the two parties to negotiate and hopefully come up with something better. If not, we'd reintroduce it in the fall.
We're on Article twenty-six, aren't we?
Did I get to run one?
Twenty-six is petitioning the legislature.
I was out of order, I was confused as to which article.
Oh, okay.
We have so many articles before us.
Okay, go back, we're on Article twenty-six, which is, as I understand, to petition the legislature for, on behalf of three Byfield firemen who have apparently aged out of active service, we need an act of the legislature to enable them to perform their services. Does somebody wish to explain what their, those services are?
Okay, Mr. Moderator, Mike Bogaros, Newbury Selectmen. I move that the town vote to petition the General Court to adopt the special legislation as set forth verbatim in Finance Committee Appropriation, in the Finance Committee Appropriations What this is, is we have three firefighters, and it only affects three firefighters, and both, and all three are part of the Byfield Fire Department. They've reached the age of sixty-five, and the state has a cutoff date. Those reaching sixty-five cannot participate as firefighters anymore. These three individuals provide special services to the, to the fire department. And firefighter Robert Haynes is our mechanic, and he's also the most knowledgeable on all the firefighters, on all the fire trucks, fire apparatus that we have, and we'd like to have him stay on until age seventy. Firefighter Wayne Reitz, similarly, he's, he's the treasurer protection one, and he's kept us solvent all these years, and he'd like to stay on, and we'd like to keep him, at least till age seventy. And firefighter Edward Sterns, he is a engineer that's helped us with our building, and he also is a EMT, works on the ambulance, and he does dispatching. In a fire department like we have, we don't like to discourage our seniors from participating, and we also don't like to discourage our young people from participating. So in this case here, we'd like them to be able to stay on until age seventy. They're in good health, insurance is not, and liability is not an issue, and I would ask that you vote in affirmative.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Bogaros. The motion has been made and seconded, does anyone wish to speak on the subject? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, okay, yep. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm opposed to this motion, it's nothing against the three gentlemen, this is not personal, this is going against state law. It's been upheld in many other communities in this state, where once a firefighter reaches sixty-five, they're required to retire. I've heard that at more than one selectman meeting, both the Town Administrator and the Town Attorney state that unequivocally, that we are going against state law by allowing them to be on the payroll. We risk the liability if something happens, either to them or a fire that they're involved in. So I, I'm strongly against this, because it goes against state law and it opens up the town to huge liability. And again, it's not personal, but I think we need to follow state law here and say that as fine gentlemen these are and the service they've given, we, we just cannot risk the liability to the town if something happens to them or a fire they're involved in.
As, I, I think, yeah, as I understood it, one was a treasurer, one was a dispatcher. Mr. Bayer?
Okay, first of all, if it wasn't against the state law, we wouldn't be here voting on this right now. We are voting to amend it so that we can allow them to work. I also have to urge that this is only at the chief's discretion that he will allow this. He has already agreed to put them into a special category. They will wear a vest over, they will not go into a burning building, they will run a pump truck, they will work on the trucks, and they will help out to the best of their ability. We have gone over this and over this, and it is to the best interest of the town to keep these individuals on the fire department and working. Their training, their expertise, the way that they bring up the new guys and teach them is invaluable, we cannot lose these guys. So please, I urge you to vote for this for tonight, because these guys are invaluable. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bayer. Okay. Okay, no, I think we understand the issue now. I'm going to call...
Sorry.
Okay, I'll give you, really, ten seconds.
I have a right to speak.
Yes, you do, and I'm giving you ten seconds to do exactly that.
If we keep these gentlemen on the payroll, don't we need to replace them with fully active firefighting-capable firefighters? And what does that do to the firefighting budget to keep these three gentlemen on whom we have to...
Okay, thank you. You've asked your question. I think it's understandable. Does anyone wish to respond to it? Okay, Mr. Bulgares?
Sorry, can you...
Mike?
There is no active payroll. When there's a fire, if they participate or if they provide a service, they would get paid the hourly rate. There is no payroll. They don't take anybody's place.
Okay.
How do they get paid? They're just being, if they're working on the pumper, and some other guy is going to work on a fire, how's that paywork? I just, I don't understand.
They get paid, they get paid by the hour. If they're there, they'll get paid. If they're not, they won't get paid. They're not taking somebody else's job.
Excuse me, excuse me. When, when Bob works on a truck, or when Wayne does bookkeeping, they don't get paid for that. They do it out of the goodness of their heart. If, if Huck is there dispatching, yeah, he might get whatever the call guy would get, but it frees up one of the call guys to go to the fire. So, it's not, it's not, they don't, it's not like a regular job where they're getting an hourly wage. They're call firefighters, they only get paid when they go to an actual fire.
Okay, the question was asked, and it's been answered. Okay? Now, you've already spoken, sir. Do you wish to be heard? Please come to the mic.
I'm Elizabeth Buckley, and I live on South Street. I have a twenty-five-year-old grandson who is on the Byfield Fire Department, and he is lucky he has these older people to learn from. They're teaching him the correct ways now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll give you fifteen seconds to make a final point, then we'll take the vote.
I'd like to ask the town attorney. Currently, we are going against state law, because they're on the payroll and they're over sixty-five. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we are risking right now, as we wait for a home rule petition to be passed in the, in the General Court, we are risking the town's liability by having them on the payroll now. Is that correct?
Currently, the state law is that mandatory retirement at sixty-five. This would, petitioning the legislature would essentially allow the legislature to exempt these three people from the state law, so it wouldn't be a violation of the state law. However, I don't think that that resolves the insurance liability issue. Is that correct, Tracy?
Do you wish to speak?
The recommendation for our insurers, the liability carriers, is that we follow the state law.
I think that speaks volumes.
That's your answer? Okay, you've got your answer.
I think everybody needs to listen to that answer.
Okay. All, all those in favor of Mr. Bulgares's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have to, I have to get a count. All those in favor, please rise. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Remley.
Thirty-nine in favor, twenty-five opposed.
Thirty-nine in favor, twenty-nine opposed. Mr. Bulgares's motion passes. What is it? It's to accept a state law that would basically, what, provide a thousand-dollar pay raise to the treasurer-collector? Have I got it right? Who's, who's this? Mr. Bayer, do you want to...
Hold on. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight-P.
Okay.
I second the motion.
By way of actually, do I have what it would do correct? Mr. Bayer? That it would give a, allow a thousand-dollar pay raise to the collector?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to read it?
Correct.
I'll actually, I'll actually read it, the rationale. Acceptance of this section of Massachusetts General Law allows for a collector or treasurer who has completed the necessary courses of study and training, and has been awarded a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association to receive an amount equal to ten percent of such regular annual compensation, but not more than a thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's it. It's a thousand dollars for an educational achievement. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. And, the Article Twenty-eight, to authorize the, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into agreements, including but not limited to payment in lieu of tax agreements pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-eight-H, with one or more renewable energy companies operating one or more solar systems, or to take any vote or votes in relation thereto, and...
Mr. Moderator, I move the article.
And, Mr. Mountain moves the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
May I make a very brief discussion of why this is, why we're in favor of this?
Okay, pull up close to the mic, please.
Okay, am I close enough?
Yep.
All right, sorry about my voice. Basically, what this is about is that, and it's from our lessons learned with the, the solar energy field, is that if we go through the normal taxation process, what happens is that initially, we tax these facilities at a very high rate, but they depreciate over time, and so, our tax revenues decline over time, and typically, like for a solar project, the lifetime of the facility is about twenty years. We believe it's both in our interests, and it's certainly in the interest of the potential applicants, that we negotiate an agreement where the payments are equal over the lifetime of the project, and as I said, typically twenty years. Both from the town perspective, because it's much easier for us to budget if we know we have this source of revenue stable for twenty years. From the applicant's, applicant's point of view, it's in their interest, because they want to spread their costs over time as well. And so, what this really means is that we wouldn't be giving up any tax dollars. Sometimes, we would gain some, but we would expect to use proper accounting procedures to figure out what a fair rate would be if we end up going with a level tax rate over the lifetime of the project.
Okay. Understand the article? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The article carries, the motion carries. And the final article, Article Twenty-nine?
I'm turned off? Back on? Okay. For Caleb over there, there's twists and knobs like mad that most of you can't see. I move to pass over this article in order to give time for the two parties to involve to negotiate.
Okay, the, the motion is made and seconded.
Second.
To pass over the article. There was a discussion prior to the start of the town meeting with Mrs. Boudreau and with the council representing the Boudreuxs. Obviously, they would like to have action sooner than the next town meeting. However, Selectman Mountain has talked with the Department of Fish and Game, who say that, basically, that the lawyer who the Boudreuxs approached before dropped the ball, and with the assistance of Selectman Mountain and Selectman Walker, they hope to negotiate in the meantime some kind of a deal with the Department of Fish and Game, which will enable the legislation, if we approve it at the next town meeting, to be, to pass unanimously down in the state legislature without opposition from Fish and Game. Do I state that correctly? Maybe not altogether clearly, but, so, it's, this is not a vote against helping out the Boudreuxs.
Mr. Moderator, I just forgot to make one short comment, and that is that one of my concerns is if we go forward with the current proposal, that it actually could make things turn out worse for the Boudreuxs. We never know, when you go for these special acts for a single property, it often takes years to resolve. It often doesn't happen right away. And secondly, we don't know that if Fish and Wildlife pushes back hard on this one, it could make things worse than the present situation, not better.
Okay. So, the, the motion is to pass over the article, and there's been a second. All those in favor, does anyone wish to be heard? All those in favor of passing over the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That's the final article. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Mr. Moderator? Second, and all those in favor, aye. Thank you very much for those who stayed here.